20th, 2021 Closed Session Meeting of the Fullerton City Council to Order. Madam Clerk, would you please provide the requirements for this meeting?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. In March 2020, Governor Newsom proclaimed a state of emergency of COVID and issued executive orders which allow a local legislative body to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and make them accessible virtually to council members and the public. The public can access the meetings live online at fullerton.legistar.com on Spectrum Channel 3 and ATT U-verse Channel 99. The council chambers will have limited seating available on a first-come, first-served basis for members of the public who want to attend in person. Please note that the public will wear face masks and observe social distancing protocols. The public may make oral public comments via computer, smart device, or telephone, or here at the council meeting. Attending names and/or phone numbers may display on the Zoom during the meeting. For those wishing to speak via telephone, you can call 1-669-900-9128. If you are logging in on the computer, you go to zoom.us/join and then enter meeting ID 91044587690. And if you're on the phone, you will press pound sign after. And then when you're prompted to enter a participation ID, hit the pound sign again. If you would like to make a comment during the meeting and you're calling in, press star 9 to raise your hand virtually. If you're in the Zoom, please use the raise hand feature and a staff member will call you when is your time to speak. If you are logged in with your phone number, you will get the last four digits of your phone number called and to identify you. You'll have three minutes to speak on the item. Please remember to speak your name for the record. And please keep in mind that the public may speak only one time to each item on the agenda. And that is all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that. Would you please conduct the roll?
Mayor Whitaker.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Jung.
Present.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
And Councilmember Zara.
Here.
We will now hear public comment on closed-session items.
I believe they're here for the lottery.
Okay. So, none in the chambers. Do we have any questions via Zoom?
Do we have any Zoom comments for closed session?
Yes.
She may have snuck away from her desk.
Okay, with that, we will now recess to closed session to discuss the closed-session agenda items.
And we will conduct a lottery drawing now.
Right.
The Fullerton Indians Football Booster Club.
There you go. There you go. Look, they're here. They're attending. You for sure will. Go Indians.
Now you got to cheer for all the rest because there's no one left here, so.
We'll make it lively for you.
Troy Football Booster Club. We're going to be nonpartisan.
Yeah, you can't cheer for the enemy. What is it? No, we're past homecoming. You can't.
All right, we beat them, sorry.
This is number nine.
The Fullerton Pop Warner.
Yeah, we're on a football run.
It is that company here. Fullerton Cares Autism Coalition.
Maybe that's quicker. I bet we can figure it out. You're getting pretty good. Just get a paper cut.
Yeah, I was trying to... Oh my goodness. Okay, Fullerton Rangers Soccer Club.
That's number 11, so we need four more.
We'll get there.
And those of you who are here, I think you know the routine. The permit will be up by tomorrow morning, depending how much time I have on the website. And then you can turn that into the fire department by June 4th, I believe.
We've got another high school in here. Sunny Hills Men's Soccer Booster Club.
That's a good thing.
Kiwanis Club of Fullerton.
Two more of those.
Okay, good.
Then grab a batch of five and we'll do those as well.
Okay, that's a good idea.
If you like.
Yeah.
And all the pressure, everybody's watching.
The OC Pacific Soccer League.
I think this year's theme is football, American and European.
I think so.
One more, regular ones.
Oh, one more. Okay, here's the regular one. Ministerios Profetico Roca de Salveja.
Because I had to have the hardest one to pronounce in the batch, so. Okay, that's the 15.
I should have handed that to Jesus. Okay. All right, so we have five alternates here, right?
Yes. I'm not going to help you open them so we can move you along.
Sounds great. Separate pile for alternates, right?
Yes.
Fullerton College Women's Soccer.
You can't get a raise in the soccer.
The Center of Orange County, OC.
Better go faster. There's that one.
Victory Outreach, Fullerton, Spanish Division.
That's number four.
Fullerton Junior All-American. The Boys and Girls Club of Fullerton.
Okay.
Save the popular ones for last.
Good, how are you?
Hi, Teresa. Apparently it was good to show up because everybody here got picked, so.
Hey, congrats, everyone.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I call to order the April 20th, 2021 Meeting of the Fullerton City Council to Order. And Madam Clerk, would you please provide some explanation of how this meeting will be conducted?
Thank you, Mayor. In March 2020, Governor Newsom proclaimed a state of emergency for COVID and issued executive orders which allow a local legislative body to hold meetings via teleconferencing. Members of the public can access meetings online at fullerton.legstar.com on Spectrum Cable Channel 3 and ATT U-verse Channel 99. The council chamber will have limited seating available for members of the public to attend. All persons visiting city facilities shall wear face masks and observe social distancing protocols. The public may make oral public comments at the meeting or via computer, smart device, or telephone. Please note that the attending name or phone number will display during the meeting if you're calling in or using the Zoom features. Those wishing to speak via telephone should call 1-669-900-9128. If you're calling in or logging into the Zoom meeting, the Zoom meeting ID is 931-92235088. If you're calling in, then press the pound sign, and then when prompted, press the pound sign again for the participation ID. If you're participating via telephone and like to make a comment when that item is under discussion by the council, enter star 9 to raise your hand. If you're in the Zoom, please utilize the raise hand feature, and staff will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when is your time to speak. You'll have three minutes to speak on the item. Please remember to state your name for the record. And members of the public may only speak one time during public comments and on each agenda item. And that is the instructions for addressing council this evening.
While you catch your breath, I do want to state that we welcome the participation of the public at this public meeting. And Madam Clerk, with that, would you please conduct the roll call?
Mayor Whitaker.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Jung.
Present.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
We are blessed this evening to have Shepherd Darren McWaters of the Fullerton Free Church to provide the invocation. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, and thank you all of our civic leaders and city council members. Thanks for having me here. Will you join me in prayer? Gracious God, I thank you for the beautiful city of Fullerton and the privilege of raising my family in this place. I'm grateful tonight for the incredible leadership that we have. I pray your blessing upon this meeting. I pray your blessing upon the individual leaders as they assess the different issues before them on the agenda. I pray, God, that you would give them wisdom, that you would give them discernment, that you would give them compassion and grace as they assess the needs of our city. I thank you, God, for our local law enforcement, the incredible work they do day in and day out. I pray your blessing upon them, upon these leaders, upon their families. And God, I pray that while everything happens in an orderly and a peaceable manner tonight, that for the sake of these and their families, this would also be a short meeting. And I pray that for the good of our neighbors and the glory of God. Amen.
Shepherd McWaters, just a few short lines on your church to provide some explanation of your mission.
Yes, thank you. So, Fullerton Free Church is at the corner of Baston Cherry and Brea. Been there for about 65 years. And we're currently, we're meeting just kind of distanced and separated 9:19 in the morning and 11:11 on Sundays. And then we're doing the outdoor service in our parking garage in the evenings at 5:30, which has been lovely. And looking forward this week to serving the city of Fullerton through Orange County United and Love Fullerton and kind of cleaning up trails and parks and all that stuff. So, we love being here. We're thankful for all your work. And if we can ever serve anybody, we'd love to know that, so.
We appreciate all that you do.
Thanks very much. God bless you.
With that, would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I've asked councilmember of the 1st District Fred Jung to lead that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed-session report this evening?
There's nothing to report this evening. However, we've not concluded our closed-session agenda items, and therefore we'll be going back into closed session at the conclusion of our regular meeting.
Thank you. I would ask for declarations of ex parte communications from members of the council. Seeing no takers, we will move on. We do have time at present to allow council members to provide reports on... Oh, I'm sorry, that's still on the ex parte. My fault. We do have three presentations this evening. The first is a proclamation, Drinking Water Week of 2021. We would have Meg McWade to share about Drinking Water Week.
Mr. Mayor, it'd probably be best to move to the next one.
Yeah, let's shift then right now. We'll put that one on hold. Presentation of the Korean War Memorial. And I would invite Marilyn Harris to come forward and please make that presentation.
Thank you. My name is Marilyn Harris. I'm the commander of the American Legion here in Fullerton. We are very excited to partner with the Korean War Committee, Memorial Committee, to get the memorial built here. My slides... Which one am I pushing? The arrow?
Arrow.
Okay. Just to bring you up to date, there's an MOU with the city of Fullerton for putting the memorial in the park. The location is just at the corner where Brea branches off from Harbor. It's a great little place right next to the Duck Pond. We've had coordination meetings along the way with the city, with the architect, worked out some details that we had. You get a chance to see what the names will look. Each one of the panels on the stars has 750 names of people who lost their life in the Korean War from America. Then we had a groundbreaking last August. It was pretty exciting. Then, just recently, we had the last layout for the project to see what it actually looked like on the ground. You can see, for instance, the blue hats on the ground there are the size of the stars. The only two changes that occurred while we were laying that out is that the sign, if you look up at the top left, you'll see a Joe's... Joe's model for the beveled edges on the bottom of the sign. Legos provided. It's very cute. We moved the sign a little bit closer to the street side. And the beveled edges on the sign, that was about the only thing that we did. And our dedication date is scheduled for the 28th of September. In the next week or so, the permit will go into the city for approval. After that, the contract will be let by the committee, and work could begin, and we'll hope to be completely finished for dedication date. If I don't have any questions, Joe would like to bring you up to date on the finances. And just want to say... Come on, Joe.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protam, and councilmembers. My name is Joe Pack. I'm the general secretary of the Korean War Memorial Committee from the day one. I was just showing the mayor the picture that I took back in 2014. We look much younger, like Councilman Jung said. So, I passed out the bank statement to each one of the council, and the mayor and Mayor Protam. Our budget was for $720,000. That's including 20% contingency. So, we are well over that, as you can see on the bank statement. And on the back of the bank statement is the remittance from the Korean government to the council general in Los Angeles that they are holding the money for us so that when we start the construction, they will then give the money to us. They want to make sure that money is spent on construction. So, I also, I just want to introduce our committee members. President James Rowe, Vice President Peggy Ho, and then Tony Pack, member. And tonight, we are going to appoint Commander Marilyn Harris as advisory committee member. She's been advisor for us since 2014, so it's not something new, but we want to make it official by presenting this plaque to her at this event. Another thing that I just want to show you is that this is the picture of the mayor Pack from our sister city in Yongin. And Councilman Jesus Silva been there and met all these people back in last November, a year ago. And Mayor Pack and the members of the Korean side of the Korean War Memorial Committee, a fundraising committee. Just wanted to show that because they were in the Korean newspaper in March 22nd. So, at this time, if I can ask James Rowe, president, to come forward with a plaque to present to Commander Marilyn Harris and all the members to come forward and take a picture, I would really appreciate it. Thank you. I just want to end with a quote by Mayor Pack of the Yongin City who said in this newspaper article that it is truly significant that this historic, the first Korean War memorial that's going to have 36,492 American soldiers who gave their all during the Korean War is going to be at the sister city, Fullerton. So, that she... He mentioned that this is very, very significant that, you know, out of so many cities, the Fullerton is the city where the Korean War memorial is going to be built. With that, thank you so much for all your support. I've been working with Alice Loya of the Recreation Department, Ginger, and, you know, with the direction from our city manager, Ken Doma. Thank you so much.
To all of you, a thank you for this worthy memorial, respecting and memorializing those who gave their all in defense of freedom. We appreciate that. And as someone who understands fundraising can be difficult, I think it calls for applause that you've exceeded your goal.
If I could just say thank you to the city of Fullerton and all the staff, particularly Hugo Curio, Doug Picard, and now Alice, I'm sorry, Loya. And the architect that we've been working with the most is Don Dyer out of Studio MLA. And so, we want to thank everybody and thank you for this great honor from the committee. And we hope to see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Ms. McWade liable to join us here at this stage?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, that was a mistake on the agenda. That is not going to be presented until the May 4th meeting.
Okay, we'll carry that one forward then. I do have one other proclamation here on the agenda, which is to declare National Therapy Animal Day. And many of us are very aware of the importance of therapy animals. This proclamation says, "Whereas there are thousands of pet partners, therapy animal teams serving in communities across the United States, and Pet Partners has designated April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day. Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams in the town of Fullerton play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human-animal bond. And Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams make millions of visits per year in settings such as hospitals, nursing homes, schools, and hospice. And Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students facing literary challenges, and those approaching end-of-life. And these exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Bruce Whitaker, mayor of the city of Fullerton, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021, as National Therapy Animal Day and encourage our residents to celebrate our therapy animals and their human handlers. Further, I publicly salute the service of therapy animal teams in our community and in communities throughout the nation." Dated 20 April of '21. Any... Councilmember Jung, do you have a comment?
No, sir.
Okay, great. And, all right. April gets declared a month for very many special reasons. And that's just one more at the very tail end. With that, we are now open for public comments. Anyone wishing to speak to items or issues that do not appear on this regular agenda are welcome to come forward. You may speak for up to three minutes, less if that works. And please direct your comments to the council, and as always, observe proper decorum. And with that, please.
Hi. Thank you for hearing me out, council members. My name is James Stump, and I'm here regarding the issue of the motorhomes of our Walnut area, I think that's Walnut Way and Walnut Avenue, and the potential eviction of us staying there. I have issues of my own, bipolar issues, and I'm also a stroke survivor fighting a case, and I have two dogs that they're my therapy dogs. This is... It's a dead-end situation with you guys plan on just kicking people out. You're just passing the buck to somebody else. I'm hoping that we can come up with a solution.
Pardon if I may, Councilmember Silva.
Is this item on the agenda? Talking about Valencia, the parking, just for clarification, it's item 15, I believe?
Yeah, it might be better, really, as your comments keep directing on that, to make your comments when that agenda item becomes available.
Okay.
If there are other matters that you want to discuss of a more, less specific nature, that would be fine.
No, this is purely the agenda. It's about my home living situation and possibly being homeless.
Okay, well, I apologize. That was... The instructions really are anything that doesn't appear on the agenda. But when we bring up that item, you're more than welcome to come up and...
I wasn't aware it was on the agenda, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here to speak the same case.
Okay.
They're giving us tickets on Friday or Saturday, and they're going to stop moving our V's.
If you speak now, you won't be able to speak later. And again, that's on an agenda item, so.
That's what we're here for.
Okay, then we'll get to it. Good evening.
How you doing tonight, Mayor?
All right.
Chief, good to see you. Craig Sheets, we're speaking about some killer weapons tonight, and whether displaced. AK-47s, you'll see the serial number. I've got... Listen, it's got them for you. I've given the chief one as well. Will match the green card. So, INS is allowing foreign material to come over here, which could possibly be a device. And I've been speaking, chief, several times with you about cat urine could be a problem to the prisons, and things just getting worse. You know what I mean? Right. I don't think that's the answer to our country. As well, with the green card to the AK-47, civil workers could lose their pension. Really easy. I could come forward with that fast. As well, these are the locations of these weapons. People are going to be forced under this in-streaming, I don't know how to put it, overthrow. How's that? Is that a good word? Overthrow of our country? And if you see the kids these days, they've been playing with guns, and you see them in dungeons. Our schools and our parks are empty with children. They're playing machine gun games right now for this. As well, I'm going to the Gulf, Texas. I'll miss you, Fullerton. Thanks a lot for... Appreciate you letting me come and speak and get out there when I got to get out. But I'm going to the Gulf. You'll see the mess there. The pictures tell the story. The Gulf Ocean is connected to South America. As well, I've been speaking against our military, which is federal. That's federal police. That is martial law, bringing dope into our country, and they have been for 40, 50 years. So, Gulf of Mexico is connected to South America, so that could be a filter for cocaine as well. A lot of ugly stuff. You know, the oil mess, there was one oil rig that blew up down there. If you check it out, it ain't even cleaned up. It's a mess. There's still ocean life dying over this. If they all go off at once, we'll have no range cycles. This is another death warning. And then, the people responsible, back to the cat urine. And cat urine is five times concentrated to human. I'm getting close. I will have this soon. So, these are the... These are the human forms that are not human. And jails, I'm sure, will fall apart fast. Whoever's getting rich off of that, goodbye. And then there's one more thing I need to say. Chief, you're welcome for your drug dogs. Keep them.
Thank you.
Keep me on the road, you get your dog. Fair enough.
Your time limit. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Whitaker, Maureen Milton, 53-year resident in the city of Fullerton. Tonight, I was going to talk about... I am going to talk about the Korean memorial site. Tonight I was going to talk about, I am going to talk about the Korean memorial site because I've been, I've been interested in it ever since I heard an item on TV. And the thing of it is, I cannot see or have any idea of what the memorial is going to look like because it is so far off the sidewalks that the handicapped and the disabled can't get to it because our mobile devices generally are not four-wheel drive and are all-terrain. That's what I was hoping that the group would be here when I said this. And also, the, there is only one sign, to my knowledge, of the memorial in the city. There should be signs here at City Hall or the big banner, the big signs, at City Hall, the library, the community center, and at the fire stations. So when people are going by, they will know what we are planning in the city. It may cost a little bit, but if it's worked right and presented to the various people in the community, it may not cost anything at all to put up all these other signs about the memorial. Because it is important, because if it's not done right or promoted right, when you have a pool of millions and millions of people to choose from, to find out if they're interested, and believe me, there are. And so it's got to be out there, but people have to know about it. And that's the thing. But please, put something close so the handicapped and disabled, and I'm sure there's a lot of Korean people that have family members that it might have been, that could get to see the sign. I didn't even see anything in the newspaper about it. So I hope that City Manager Domer talks to the Korean group that is sponsoring this so they can make arrangements for other signs. I will tell them how to do it with as little expense as possible. And I just hope it works. And I hope it brings interest into the City of Fullerton along with revenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is, my name is Bill Brown. I've been a 47-year resident of Fullerton. And I've raised seven kids, actually still raising two kids in Fullerton. And I want to talk about the incident with Hector Hernandez. You know, he's basically, this was a guy that was beaten up in his front room, went out in the front yard to try to surrender himself and do what he was told, and then was attacked by a dog. And then an officer joined in the attack along with the dog. This isn't the kind of policing that we want to see in Fullerton. Chief, I don't know how you can look at this and justify anything that the officer did here.
Please, please direct your comments to the council.
Okay, so this is not what we expect from policing in Fullerton. This was, this is a clear murder. Hector was on the ground. He had every right to defend himself from a dog that was sent to attack him while he was doing what he was told, with his hands in the air. So he had every right to defend himself. The officer, the law clearly specifies that you can use deadly force only to protect human life. And it's that way for a reason. Otherwise, any officer could just use a dog to set people up whenever they want and shoot them. You clearly just say, oh, get him, dog. And we know that probably 99% of the time, someone's going to try to defend themselves from a dog biting him. So an officer would just be able to just shoot people whenever they want at will. The officer was never threatened. You can't show me any proof anywhere that officer for one second was ever threatened in that yard. This officer was the first on scene. He had the longest to assess what was happening. He saw no hostility. All he saw was a man trying to surrender. Instead, he was screamed at by at least 10 officers that were telling him all the same thing, something he's already doing. So they basically intimidated him back to where he felt secure in front of his house, and he never dropped his hands. How do you justify moving up and shooting someone? It's very simple. He saw his dog get injured, and he killed him because he didn't want his dog to get hurt any further. He lost all sight of his training, moved up fast, and decided, I need to kill him to stop him from hurting my dog. And that's against the law. So how could he just roam the streets of Fullerton like this is not a problem? If he cared about the city, this isn't the best we have to give the citizens in the city. I mean, this makes no sense. I shouldn't have to be here complaining about this. I had more trust in my police department and the prior city council that they would fix this problem. We shouldn't even have this conversation. I understand this is a tough job, but this isn't the way you do your job. There's a lot of training put into these guys. And for an officer just to lose himself and lose all his training and decide, all I can do is kill him to stop him from hurting my dog, and this is what he does. And everyone just look at this and act like, well, let's not talk about it. It's okay, we got a lawsuit. The lawsuit's going to be there financially. We want justice. We want this officer not to be on our streets.
Your three minutes are up, thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Amina Mirza Kazi. I'm a Fullerton resident. I'm a mother of four, an attorney, and a concerned community member about what happened to Hector Hernandez that night. The more I've learned about what happened, the more appalled I am at the lack of accountability, the lack of response, and the lack of information that we have been getting as a community, despite multiple, multiple demands for information. We all know about the Derek Chauvin verdict today. Minnesota Attorney General Keith Ellison said, "I would not call today's verdict justice, however, because justice implies true restoration. But it is accountability, which is the first step towards justice. And now the cause of justice is in your hands, meaning the people." Our community has not even been able to take that first step towards accountability because we do not have the video footage released. We do not have access to the witness statements. We do not have access to the autopsy report, which we're hoping that you council members can all influence by getting that release to the community and the legal team. And to the family, of course, the neighbors, Bill, who was there. All we're relying on are the witness statements of Bill and others who saw this murder in real time. We're also requesting that you address what we are seeing as community members of the issue of policing in our communities and taking some of the resources for the policing for mental health crises, these domestic violence issues, and finding alternate, maybe bold, maybe innovative solutions to solve those issues. Last August, I was watching a police encounter of a man, Latino man, pulled out right next to Sunny Hills High School, put on the curb, three police vehicles. And what had he gotten pulled over for? For not having his front license plate on. He was pulled over, and as soon as I started recording, the officers threw something, they wrapped it up. And I said to the officers, where's your reasonable suspicion? We don't need reasonable suspicion. He didn't have his license plate. Well, what justified the length of this encounter? Ma'am, this isn't our training. This is how we're trained. Oh, you're trained this way? They said, you know, you can file a complaint. And I said, well, I have other avenues to address that. And that's another reason why I'm here tonight. You are our avenue to address this crisis in our community, to take that first step towards accountability for Hector Hernandez, and to make sure that my children, my black and brown children, have the freedom to walk their streets, to drive their cars, to go to school, to go run errands for mama when I'm too tired after a long day, and not have to be threatened by police officers who may take their lives, their dignity, and my loved ones. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Bruce, council. I'm Vern Nelson from Anaheim. Nothing can bring Hector Hernandez back to life, back to his family. All we're asking for is a little justice for Hector, a little justice and reform to make it less likely that another Fullerton resident will be killed unnecessarily by the people who are paid and sworn to protect and serve them. So I was glad to see that after seeing the overwhelming video and witness evidence of Officer Farrell's needless murder of Hector. The police chief fired him the next day. Three days later, he was arrested. And finally today, after a long, fair trial, he was found guilty of murder. Oh, wait, I read my notes wrong. That was Derek Chauvin and George Floyd in Minneapolis, not Fullerton. It's easy to get confused, the killings were only two days apart. What happened here in Fullerton was the police department immediately began lying about Hector, telling us he wouldn't keep his hands up and saying he was holding a knife, both lies. And the Farrell officer is still on the street. I'm from Anaheim, and we know Chief Robert Dunn well. He was, he used to be our police spokesman back in the bloody days when there were the most killings and riots. He could always spin a yarn about how dangerous and evil the victim was and how heroic the cop was to kill them. That's really what you expect from a police spokesman or really any corporate spokesman, not the truth, but whatever spin looks good in the moment. But I think Fullerton should demand better from a chief. One of our demands is to fire Officer Farrell. I know four of you councilmen receive campaign money from the police union, all of you except Bruce. But that shouldn't mean you're afraid to vote for accountability. You may not be able to take the Farrell officer off the streets yourself, but Chief Dunn serves at your pleasure, and you can demand that. Whatever snapped in Farrell's head that night as 10 other officers were yelling at Hector to keep his hands up, and he did his best to comply. Farrell made two bad and fatal decisions within a few seconds, letting his canine Roder loose on Hector for no reason, then shooting Hector twice when he tried to defend himself from the dog. And just in case any of you think that a canine is an officer, no. A canine is a weapon, a lethal weapon. Speaking of canine Roder, I thought it was interesting that when Farrell let him loose, the dog didn't know who he's supposed to go after. He first went after the yelling cops instead of Hector. Then after Farrell shot Hector, Roder started to go after Officer Farrell. Smart dog. How much time do I have?
You're still good.
There it is. I skipped the part about Todd Spitzer. I just want to mention how lucky Hector was to have such good friends and neighbors, people like Bill Brown and Kelly Williams, who won't rest until their friend sees justice, and everyone else who had the presence of mind to film what was going on. Some people go down like that and are completely forgotten. By the way, we're still not over what happened to Kelly Thomas. Justice for Hector, justice for Kelly, and always film the police.
Hello, council.
Good evening.
My name is Erica Cervantes, a law student from Loyola Law School and a Fullerton resident, and I'd like to say a few words. George Floyd, Dante Wright, Adam Toledo. These are only few of the countless black and brown victims who have been murdered by the hands of the police. And now, the City of Fullerton and the Fullerton Police Department might not think that they have similar issues, but with the murder of Hector Hernandez, that is certainly not the case. And we cannot turn a blind eye to it. Hector Hernandez was a father of two and a U-Haul mechanic who was loved by his family and by his community, as you can see today. And on May 27, 2020, two days, two days after the killing of George Floyd, he was murdered on his own front lawn. And let me repeat it for everyone here. He was murdered in front of his own, in his front lawn. And on that day, when confronted by police, Hector had his hands up. And despite having his own hands up, the officer released the uncontrollable canine onto Hector. And as Hector was trying to defend himself from the attack on the ground, being no threat to anyone else, the officer shot him in cold blood, twice, in his chest. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is excessive force. Now, the City of Fullerton and the FPD can say George Floyd's name whenever they want, but that proclamation lacks substance. If you allow his murderer to walk and work in these streets. And if that's the case, then I worry for our own community because this will surely happen again if this inhumane culture of the FPD isn't addressed appropriately. Someone else will lose their father, like in the case of Hector Hernandez. Someone else will lose their son, like in the case of Kelly Thomas. We haven't forgotten. And though, even though we had a favorable verdict in the Derek Chauvin case, the work isn't over. And we can start with the city actually hearing our demands. Fire Officer Farrell and have the DA criminally charge him with murder. Release all the footage and witness statements the night of Hector's murder. Defund the FPD and cancel FPD's contract with LexiPole. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, council. Let me see, pull this up a little bit. Good evening, council, everyone here. My name is Mike Rodriguez. I'm a Fullerton resident, a public school teacher, and I'm here to speak about Hector Hernandez and his case. Next month will be the one-year anniversary of Hector's murder at the hands of Officer Jonathan Farrell of the Fullerton Police Department. Hector should still be here today, and Farrell should be off the streets. Hector should have been holding his two boys, right, this past Easter. But his sons will never feel, will never feel that embrace again. And that breaks my heart, being a father myself. Executions at the hands of the police have been happening all over the country for too long, and Fullerton is no exception. FPD has killed three more people since the murder of Kelly Thomas. This is why we're now here to say that it's time to redirect funds away from Fullerton Police Department to other programs that take proactive steps to prevent crime. Fullerton spent $50 million on our police force last year. During the time of a pandemic, when we were all tightening our belts, all the departments of Fullerton, Fullerton PD actually saw an increase in their budget last year. How did that happen? 47% of our general funds goes to the police in Fullerton. And we're here to say it's not necessary. That's half of the general fund. It's time to redefine the meaning of public safety. Police officers with guns do not make our communities more secure. When people have roofs over their heads, they're more secure. When they have access to mental health services and youth programming to help youth develop, they're more secure. But when our government sanctions their employees to patrol our city with guns, people die unnecessarily, like Hector did. Specifically, it's people of color and the poor that die. And we cannot have that anymore. So this is why we are demanding that you set up an independent task force made up of residents to research and analyze the police budget to find out how we can divert police funds to places that we need it most. Housing, mental health, youth programming, unarmed emergency response teams that can de-escalate situations, not like they escalated them that night that Hector was murdered. I have faith that we can all do this together, so let's work on it. If officers want to continue working for the public safety of our communities, let's retrain them to become social workers, teachers, youth advisors, mental health clinicians. Embed them in our communities in ways that proactively change people's lives. Many may not see this institution of policing as we know it as racist, but the outcomes that come from policing are most definitely racist. And it feeds into systemic white supremacy. It's brown, black, and native people that are dying from the police violence in higher rates throughout the country, just like Hector did. It's time to reimagine the idea of public safety in our communities. So I repeat, as we come up to the one-year anniversary of Hector's murder, the Justice for Hector Coalition, made up of over 20 local organizations.
Thank you.
urges you to set up a task force as soon as possible to find ways to divert that $50 million to proactive resources that can keep our community safe.
Thank you, your time is up. Appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Kitty Hara Myung, District 4. And I want to start off by saying that I am thankful, a little bit different from all the conversations. I'm thankful for the conviction of Officer Chauvin in the Floyd murder case. Hopefully, this is just the beginning of many reparations that must be made to communities of color. To show how far Fullerton has come regarding these issues, when I worked for Fullerton PD in the 1980s, we had only one black officer and two Latino officers. Unfortunately, Officer Cole lasted only a couple of years with our department due to continuous racial slurs by a small sector of officers. But now it warms my heart to see more and more officers of color employed by Fullerton. It shows that Chief Dunn and chiefs preceding him It shows that Chief Dunn and chiefs preceding him are doing the right thing for our city. So kudos to you guys. I've seen big changes. I've been here all my life, sixty-seven years. My main reason I'm here tonight is that I, I saw that, um, you did not approve returning the 5% cut to employee salaries, which was first implemented to help our dire financial situation. However, since the 34 million that Fullerton will be receiving due, due to COVID, why couldn't you, Mayor Dunlap and Jung, see fit to approve the return of their salaries upon Fullerton's receipt of the 34 million? You should be grateful for the employees that we still have. We all know that you have lost numerous employees to other cities that pay more than we do. I'm surprised that none of you thought of this suggestion, of suggesting that. It would have gone a long way to boost morale, which is at an all-time low. They work hard for all of you, and you three have the power to take care of them. It can only be left, it can't only be left up to Silva and Zara to think of our employees. After all, these employees did not abandon our city. They continued to do their jobs, and then some with less pay. These employees don't have a union to support them as police and fire do. So please consider putting this item back on the agenda for approval, but do not take action until the millions are received and give them a little bit hope for their future. Thank you.
My name is Donna Savido Nelson. I'm a lifetime, fifty-four-year resident of Anaheim. My son Joel, my twenty-one-year-old son, Joel Savido, was executed by the Anaheim Police on July 22nd, 2012. Um, this is his son. He was four months old. So I lost my son, and he lost his dad. Um, I know we're not supposed to address anyone, but, um, your Bob Dunn was one of the first people that was there, um, to cover up my son's murder. And there was a murder the day before, too, Manuel Diaz. That year, there was eight people killed by the Anaheim Police. Um, many of them were by serial killer cops, repeat attending cops. And that was one that killed my son. Um, you know, there, there's, Anaheim is full of serial, serial killer cops right now. And, you know, since my son's killing, we pushed really hard for a police review board. And we've had it for a few years now. And when it comes to people being killed, it's worthless. It might be good for complaints, you know, little complaints with the cops in the neighborhood or whatever, but by the time a cop has killed someone, it's too late to go to a review board. Um, so the, the reason I'm here is, the reason I'm here today is, like I've been saying, you know, when, when a cop kills, it's not going to be the first time, because in Anaheim, they keep killing. We've had one that's killed four people. They finally got rid of him. Do you want to be like Anaheim? Just because you have Bob Dunn now, Fullerton does not need to be like Anaheim. And, and from 2003 to 2016, Anaheim was ranked the ninth deadliest police force in the nation. Do you want to be like Anaheim? I'm asking you, please fire Officer Farrell for the murder of Hector Hernandez.
Hello, my name is Kelly Williams. Um, I have lived in Fullerton my whole life. Um, I want to know how the chief can preach or speak about accountability when he, the chief himself, have continuously approved lies that have been told in the murder of Hector Hernandez. What do lies and deceit suggest? Basically, cover up. Is this the type of behavior we want from our law enforcement? You, as the city council, you need to ask the police department more questions to better understand if this, the police, if this the police are reporting is true or false. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Johnson. And actually, I needed a point of clarification first, Mayor Whitaker. A gentleman before me was going to speak on Walnut Avenue, but he said he needed to wait to Valencia, so those are combined topics, Valencia and Walnut, because I wanted to speak to the Walnut issue as well.
That's why I was allowing that to go forward, to try to determine, when that topic comes up, may still be the most appropriate time to speak. I hope it's not an impediment for you to be here for that.
No, no, not a problem. I just wanted to clarify before.
No, I appreciate that. Any, any other topics that you-
No, I'll just wait for that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I believe we are ready for Zoom comments, if we have any.
All right. I'll remind those on the Zoom to please use the raise hand feature if you would like to speak during public comment. I'm going to start with our first caller. Um, with the last three digits, a phone caller, 1-0-0. Uh, area code 714, last three digits are 1-0-0. Please unmute. Okay, we'll come back to them.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. Good evening, city council and staff. My name is Jensen Hallstrom. Tonight, I would like to speak on an issue regarding mismanagement of the historic landscape at the Hunt Center grounds owned by Grace Ministries International. Recently, over 100 matured trees have been severely disfigured and cut at the historic sprawling grounds of the Grace Ministries campus. Sixty-year-old specimens of ginkgo, jacaranda, pine, eucalyptus, crepe myrtle, flowering pear, and South African coral trees have been permanently disfigured by the unapproved pruning technique called topping. Topping is the indiscriminate cutting of tree branches to stubs. Once topped, trees can never recover their natural form or structural strength, weakening future growth and increasing risk of falling branches. The International Society of Abboriculture states, topping, topping often removes 50 to 100% of all live foliage of a tree. A stressed tree is more vulnerable to insect and disease, uh, infestations. Large, open pruning wounds expose sapwood and hardwoods to attacks. Instead of the appropriate pruning techniques that these historic trees require for their health longevity, uh, a, uh, local tree trimming services, uh, including a Jose Martinez Tree Trimming Service and JLG Tree Service were contracted to, uh, to prune these trees despite it being the, uh, bird nesting season. Uh, the trees and landscaping are specifically part of the property's designation as a, on the National Register of Historic Places. The grounds were designed by noted landscape architects, R. Dudley Trudgett and Robert Herrick Carter, and, and provided a stunning but serene background to the historic William era-designed buildings, including the city of Fullerton's adjacent Unbranched Library. I'd like to say that, uh, there are, um, uh, this is too late to save the over 100 matured trees that have already been permanently damaged by this improper pruning, but, um, I'd like to inform council staff and the general public of a new group which is forming to, uh, uh, educate on proper tree care and also advocate for tree preservation in Fullerton. Uh, this group's first meeting is on Sunday of Arbor Day weekend, May 2nd, at 4:00 PM. And, uh, the public can find out more information at savefullerton.com to get the Zoom invitation for this meeting.
That's three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it, Mr. Hallstrom.
Yes. Thank, thank you.
Jennifer Rojas.
Good evening, city council. My name is Jennifer Rojas. I'm the senior policy advocate and organizer with the ACLU of Southern California. I'm, I'm calling in today in support of the Justice for Hector Hernandez Coalition. Hector Hernandez should still be here today with his family, with his neighbors, and his community. As you know, Hector's life was tragically and suddenly taken by the Fullerton Police Department Officer Jonathan Farrell on May 27th last year. Today, the ACLU of Southern California stands in solidarity with Hector Hernandez's family and community in calling for justice and accountability. The council must know that police officers' legal authority to kill underwent a key change last year. Under AB 392, the state's new use-of-force law, police can only use deadly force when necessary and in defense of human life. The law that was passed has one clear goal, and that's to save lives from police violence. This means that if there are alternatives to deadly force, police should not take a person's life. It also means that if there is not an imminent threat of serious harm to a person, police should not take a life. According to the records released by the city, the Fullerton Police Department's killing of Hector does not meet this legal standard. Hector was lying down, being attacked by a police dog, at the time he was shot and killed by the officer. From the video, it is incredibly hard to see any reason why the officer rushed towards him rather than remaining at a safe distance, or why he could not have just stepped back. It's incredibly hard to see why this violent killing was necessary in defense of human life. Since AB 392 went into effect of January of last year, Fullerton Police Department officers have shot and killed two people. Both Hector Hernandez and Jesus Estrada Leon were killed in May of last year. It is concerning that the city of Fullerton, uh, like all Orange County police agencies, is a paid subscribe, subscriber to Lexipol. This is a private, for-profit company founded by attorneys that defend police officers in litigation. Lexipol sells policing policies to police departments across California. Lexipol actually opposed changing the, the use-of-force standard in California. When AB 392 was passed, Lexipol sent a video to subscribers stating that the legal standard for use of force under the new law is, quote, "exactly the same," end quote. And they stated several times that AB 392 did not establish a necessary standard. This is plainly contrary to-
And that's your three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a phone caller with the last three digits 271. Again, that's 271. If you are using, uh, your phone, please enter, uh, star six to unmute. So caller 271.
Hello.
We can read.
Uh, my name is Boomado Boomer Vicente, and I'm an organizer with Chispa and Chicano Sonidos. They're both political organizations in Orange County that fight against police brutality. Um, I want to first start off saying that, as of today, 319 people have been killed by police this year. Um, and this is just as of yesterday. Um, we are currently living in an epidemic of police violence, you know, and I'm saying this because, you know, police don't deserve to kill people, whether they're guilty or not guilty. Um, and I'm here to stand in solidarity with the friends and family of Hector Hernandez and, and their demands. One, to fire Officer Farrell and to urge Orange County District Attorney Todd Spitzer to charge him. Two, release all footages and witness, release all footages and witness statements the night of Hector's murder. Three, defund the Fullerton Police Department and allow to cancel the Fullerton Police Department's contract with Lexipol. Um, I think today, in the wake, uh, of the verdict of, of Derek Chauvin, um, you all, as elected officials on the Fullerton City Council, have a responsibility to hold law enforcement accountable for the harm and terror inflicted on our communities. And I hope that as, as of today, that y'all would do the right thing, um, and, and, and stand on the right side of justice. Thank you.
With that, Mr. Mayor, there are no more speakers on the Zoom call.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there's a gentleman that didn't get to speak during public comments. I think he wanted to do that, sir.
Hello, my name is Bernard, and I've lived in Fullerton for almost two years now. At the special sessions on roads, all I heard from our mayor and two new council members were complaints about our roads and financial situation with no real solutions. Mayor Whitaker, Mayor Protem Dunlap, and Councilmember Jung, all three of you promised in your campaigns that you would fix our roads without a sales tax. But at last week's study session on the roads, all I heard was nothing of the sort. Councilmember Jung, all you did was praise the gas tax, praise the dedicated tax, and seemed to blame everybody, including our city staff. Hmm. With no solutions, your only idea was to raise fees on businesses, something that would hurt small businesses and Korean-owned businesses. I'm going to go ahead and venture to say that that would barely raise enough revenue to repave even a quarter mile at best. Meanwhile, that would strangle the small business community. That doesn't make sense. Mayor Protem Dunlap, Councilmember Jung, and Mayor Whitaker, you told people what they wanted to hear when you ran. You spread crazy misinformation about our financial situation, all while making a big promise to fix our roads with no additional revenue. And meanwhile, you promised to support public safety and upgrade our services. You all three said you had the answer without raising additional revenue. You three have a majority. And Mayor Whitaker, you control the agenda. Please agenda something and do something. Otherwise, the public's going to realize the truth that you're full of hot air. Go
All right. Hello.
Good evening.
Hi. Um, so my name is Jenny Matty. Um, I've been a Fullerton resident for 26 years. Mr. Silva was my math teacher, so I go way back. Um, but I just wanted to kind of have this conversation about, um- But I just wanted to kind of have this conversation about budgeting and police brutality. When we hear things like we don't have budget for, you know, streets, or we don't have budget for certain different projects within the city, and then we actually go back and we follow that money, and we see where your guys' budget is. I mean, 50% of that is going to our police department. 25% of that is going to our fire. That's 75% of our budget that can be defunded and put into programs like education. You know, we have schools in this community where majority of them are on free and reduced lunch. What does that say to us? This is that we have community members that are struggling to feed their children. And our funding is going to schools, or is going to police and fire trucks and cars and this and that. And I think you guys have a moral obligation to listen to your people. We've been continuing, continuing, continuing talking about this. We have the money for it. Money is not the issue here. We have the money for it. We live in one of the most expensive communities in the United States. Our taxes pay for these things. Now, we are here to present to you what we want our money to be spent on. You work for us, not the other way around. And your places are all replaceable. This generation is not putting up with it. I know you may have gotten away with it before, but this generation is not putting up with it. And they will run for your spots, and they will win, and they will take your seats. So it's time to listen to your community when they are speaking. Because we're not, it's not how it used to be anymore. Things aren't how they used to be anymore. They're ready, and they're willing, and they want change, and they want it now. So I pray that you listen to each and every one of your community members that you serve. You serve them, not the other way around. We have money. We ask you to use it wisely. And that's all I have to say.
We will bring discussion back to the City Council and for council member reports. Councilmember Jung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and Council, I wanted to remind everyone that Love Fullerton is this Saturday. COVID has been very difficult on the collective psyche of our city and its residents. If we can all join together this Love Fullerton Saturday, find ways to volunteer and serve in collaboration with each other. Perhaps it will act as a springboard for healing. Seems like we've got a lot of that we need to do in our community. Love Fullerton is an opportunity to remind people that you are not alone. It can act as a much-needed medicine for our city. You can serve by volunteering for a blood drive, cleaning up the train station, cleaning up our trails, our parks, or our elementary schools. You can sign up at lovefullerton.org. That said, I'm comforted by this young generation activism like what we just saw with that young lady that was a student of Councilman Silva. They're far more educated than my generation is, more tech-savvy and more compassionate, more socially aware and determined to right society's wrongs. So I challenge them to join us this Saturday and serve your community. April's also Jazz Appreciation Month. I've interviewed jazz legend Tony Bennett many times. He told me a story once that echoes his standard of cool and how cool jazz is as a music. Tony Bennett was born Anthony Benedetto, but sang under the name Joe Bari. Comedian Bob Hope, who came to hear him one night, said Joe Bari sounded like a fake name, and asked him what his real name was. When Tony told him his name was Anthony Benedetto, Bob, Bob Hope shook his head and said, "If you're gonna make it in the business, your name's too long for the marquee," and shortened his name to Tony Bennett. In jazz music, Frank Sinatra's always cast a very long shadow. The fact that Tony Bennett managed to find his own voice underneath all of that is certainly rarefied air. Tony Bennett's 94 this year and has been quietly battling Alzheimer's disease for the last five years. As we appreciate and celebrate jazz, America's classical music this month, I want to wish Tony Bennett Godspeed. If you have a moment, may I recommend putting on some of Mr. Bennett's "I Left My Heart in San Francisco," or Miles Davis's "Kinda Blue," or John Coltrane's "A Love Supreme." As a great bassist, Charlie Mingus once said, "Anyone can make this simple complicated. Creativity marks making the complicated simple." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone volunteering to go next here?
Mr. Mayor, should we have the, the city manager respond to issues, or we're gonna...
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry, I did skip that. We'd be happy to insert city manager's comments at this stage.
I'll go real quick, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just a couple of things. One, on the Korean War Memorial, just to reassure Maureen and anybody else, that will be fully ADA accessible. So on the signage, I do know that there's a construction sign at the site where the memorial will be placed, but I'm sure that after it is in and kicked off in September of this year, that there will be additional signage that we put up as a part of a wayfinding so that people can make their way to it. But I do believe that it's gonna be very popular and known throughout the county as to the Korean War Memorial. So I have no further reports at this time, sir.
Thank you. Any reports from any other department heads or staff this evening? Okay. Then we'll bring it back to the council. Councilmember Silva, are you...
Yeah, I'll, I'll just be brief. Yes, Love Fullerton this Saturday, please sign up and volunteer. And because of that, I had scheduled my walk and talks gatherings for the Saturday, so it was gonna be move, and we'll find a Saturday in May to meet and hear from the residents. So I apologize for that. Got my schedules crossed up. So join Love Fullerton this Saturday. I'll postpone my walk and talks for another, for sometime in May. And with that, we'll move on. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Councilmember Zara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't really have much of a, of a report today. Just wanted to say that I, you know, I've hosted plenty of meetings in the last couple of years that I've been on council and met with many folks. And one of the most challenging thing is understanding the process of budgeting and, and of how things work in the city. Sometimes often it's very frustrating, even to us, when we're trying to do something and then there's a lot of legal stuff that prevents us from actually moving faster on things or changing things. I welcome everyone to come and join my meetings every month. I know I skipped one last month because of some conflict of scheduling, but I'm resuming them this month. Last Tuesday of every month, usually at 6:30, right now on Zoom, so, you know, from your comfort of your own home. And I'm always available to ask questions. I've also hosted town hall, a couple of town halls, one last year and one this year recently with Chief Dunn, in collaboration with the Fulton Collaborative. And a lot of questions that I know were asked today were presented in some of the, and I know that our chief answered some of those questions, especially, I think, the issue of Lexipol came up as well. So the video, that video, that town hall is available online on the Fulton Collaborative website or on their Facebook page. It's also on, if you scroll down my Facebook page, it's on there. I do encourage you to watch some of these and go back because I think it's, it's important to, to, to be informed on some of the process. And I'm very more than happy to talk more about this and more of the budget. I think this is, this is the time to talk about our budget because we are going into budget season again. And so I'm hoping that this next budget cycle reflects a lot of what the community needs are, and, and I welcome this conversation. So, and before, before I, and I do want to say that one of our dear community members, Iglat Nuncis' mother had passed away in Bolivia, and she had to jump through hoops to get there, just to attend the funeral. She's an extremely wonderful and active member of our community who's done so much for our city, and I just want to acknowledge that publicly and, and send our condolences again to her and her family, and I hope you'll always keep her in, in our prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from you, Mr. Mayor Protem? Well, my comments or report tonight, I will, I will put on hold certain aspects of it. I just, I do want to reflect at least the reality that council members deal with up here, which is when we're involved in human tragedy, loss, the amount of passion that people have conveyed to us this evening. I appreciate that the council listened intently, often because of legal issues, laws in the state of California, and litigation. We're left in a position of not really being able to respond or have the normal dialogue that you might have with other human beings. Doesn't mean that we don't feel very strongly about those losses and about those, the hurt that people are experiencing. I do believe that we all, as human beings, want to solve these problems. And while we can't ignore, and neither should we ignore, everything happening globally in this world, this council's primary task is to focus on Fullerton issues. And I feel some of those were appropriately addressed tonight. I appreciate everyone who spoke about them. As a council member or, or mayor, you hear frequently and, and consistently everything that's wrong, all of those items in the city that aren't working, all of those problems. And indeed, that's an important part of our role, too. We are the complaint department, and we are at least perhaps the beginning of a solution, of trying to help on those solutions. So I do very much appreciate hearing from people. I just wanted to convey one more short story, which is, when we receive that steady diet all the time, it does take a toll. And people who are well-intentioned and hard-working, it can bring you down a little bit. I, I do want to say that what occurred to me a few days ago was I, I checked out Fullerton Buzz, which occasionally I do. This blog covers a variety of topics, but I, one topic in particular intrigued me. It was a post from a lady who used to live in Fullerton, and she talked about, she used to live in Fullerton, but now she's hearing a lot of negatives. And would people on the blog, would they recommend that she move back? She was missing certain elements of the city and wanted to move back, but was fearful of doing so because of some of the, the news and reports that she's received. I was amazed, as I read through the comments, there were well over 300 responses to this. And I was amazed, somewhere in the high 90%, these comments were positive, mostly from younger people, mostly from those who would concede that we have problems and challenges in the city, including the terrible state of our streets right now, which is indeed a public safety issue as well, and something that we do have to prioritize in a big way. But among all the other problems, seldom a mention was made of those. People talked about what they loved about the city, what the city offered, how it compared. They made comments about, there are problems everywhere, and it's not just in Fullerton. Very many of the challenges that we have are reflected throughout Southern California, throughout the nation for that matter. So as we wrestle with trying to arrive at solutions, I, I'm very much renewed to, to understand, to see that little poll from so many people who don't maybe arrive and speak here at a city council meeting. There is a lot of positive out there, and I just want to close by mentioning a couple of those, although after what we've heard this evening, you know, the scale is vastly different. I'd like to talk about, we had a very fine brainstorming session at the Hunt Branch Library just a, a couple of days ago. And again, so many talented people, so many innovative people coming up with wonderful ideas on how to renew and how to bring about a reopening of the Hunt Branch as a city asset, as something that we could all be proud of. So that's a very positive development. The other development on the Orange County Water District front is the GWRS expansion, up to 130 million gallons of fresh, clean water per day from recycled wastewater, from sewage and from other sources. And this will maximize, at least for the space available, at the Fountain Valley headquarters of the Orange County Water District. It will maximize the ability for us to use this new source of water, and a fairly reliable source of water, to help augment and provide new supply for our needs here in two-thirds of Orange County. There is a lot of good news to be had out there, and while I'm, I'm not one to advocate that we look past what is wrong, I think it's important that we appreciate what is right, and let's work to make more right in this city. And we can work together regardless of differences, ideology, race, gender, that shouldn't matter. What matters is the quality of the solutions that we arrive at, and we appreciate the public speaking out on behalf of their opinions on it. So thank you very much for that, and I would, at this stage, entertain a motion on our consent calendar.
So moved?
Okay, moved by Councilmember Zara, seconded by Councilmember Silva.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to pull number seven, please.
Okay. All right. And we will handle that at the back of the meeting. Is that okay for you? Well, let me not really pull something, but at least address it at this moment. That is the other very positive thing that I was going to comment on. Item number four on the consent calendar is reaffirmation of declaration of local emergency due to COVID-19 pandemic. We are trending in a very positive direction, and in fact, as we renew this declaration of local emergency, we're almost crosswise with where the state government is, with where the governor is at this point. Because we're looking probably within this extension to move back to a more normal situation as regards this local emergency that we've renewed a few times. It's necessary to renew it, however, to be able to land funding and to be able to qualify for funding, at least in the near term. So thank you for that, Councilmember Jung. And is there anything else on consent before we vote? Madam Clerk, we would take a roll on the balance, other than item seven.
Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap?
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
And with that, we have some public hearings this evening. Item number 14, which involves short-term rental regulations and amendments.
Good evening, Mayor Whitaker, members of the City Council. Item before you this evening is a consideration of an amendment to Titles 4 and 15 of the Fullerton Municipal Code related to the regulations of short-term rentals. A little bit of a chronology, because we've been talking about this item for a number of years in a number of different meetings. This doesn't represent the full chronology, it's just some of maybe the highlights. So dating back to October of 2020 is when the City Council approved for first reading ordinance 3290. That was the ordinance first regulating short-term rentals here in the city of Fullerton. It was second reading in November and became effective in December of 2020. Not long after its effective date, the, we received a notice of intent to file legal action against the ordinance, concerns regarding the environmental analysis that was associated with it, CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act. As a result of that threat of legal action, the City Council directed staff to amend the ordinance to settle the legal challenge. We presented that recommended amendment to settle the legal challenge to the Planning Commission just last month, in March of 2021. And I'll be talking a little bit more about the Planning Commission's recommendation at that meeting. The current ordinance, so as it is currently adopted, allows up to 325 whole-house rental permits. Whole-house rental means that the property owner is not on the property while it's being used for short-term rental. We did not place a limit on the home sharing. This is a situation where a bedroom or two or three is being used for short-term rental while the property owner does remain on the site. There is an application and review process, which involves either the Community and Economic Development Director or the Planning Commission. There is separation requirements for whole-house rentals, a 300-foot separation between those whole-house rental permits. We do have Good Neighbor Guidelines, which talks to trash, parking, property maintenance, noise. There is a local contact required and a 24-hour, 24/7 hotline available for neighbors' residence... There is a local contact required and a 24-hour, 24/7 hotline available for neighbors, residents with a community, to call if there is an issue at a short-term rental location, and we are contracting with a third-party host compliance to provide those services. We also prohibit commercial events, like weddings, auctions, any onsite advertising, and the permits are valid for up to three years but are renewed annually and can obviously be revoked in cases of bad operators. So this is the ordinance as it was adopted in 2020. The amended components in order to settle the threat of legal action essentially is to remove the whole-house rental component. So the ordinance would be amended to prohibit whole-house rentals. We are recommending a one-year amortization period. So if a whole-house rental is operating in the city currently, they would have a period of one year from the effective date of this ordinance amendment in order to either convert to a home-sharing type short-term rental or to cease doing short-term rental, so they could continue to rent the home, just need to be for periods of longer than 30 consecutive days or any other residential use of the property. We would continue to allow the home-sharing style of short-term rental permits. We have that same permit process, as well as the renewal, revocation for bad actors. None of those other components have changed. The Good Neighbor Guidelines, all of those other components have stayed the same in the amended ordinance. It's really just the prohibition of those whole-house rentals. So the Planning Commission did consider the action at its meeting on March 31st. At that meeting, they voted by a vote of four to one to recommend that the City Council does not approve this amendment. The concerns raised by the Planning Commission in taking that action, they were worried about restricting the property rights for people that wish to use their properties for whole-house short-term rentals. They pointed to the fact that nearly 80% of the short-term rentals that are currently operating in the city are whole-house. And then secondarily, they had some concerns about taking an action to amend the municipal code just to settle threat of legal action by an attorney firm that's representing a labor group. So there are a couple actions available to the City Council this evening. So first up, you could accept the recommendation by the Planning Commission and deny the ordinance amendment. In that situation, the ordinance as it was originally adopted, ordinance 3290, would continue to be the law of the land, so to speak, for Titles 4 and 15. You could introduce the ordinance, making the amendments as recommended to settle the threat of legal action, and so that would be a first reading of that tonight. And then lastly, if you do take the action to introduce the ordinance, you would want to find that this ordinance amendment is also categorically exempt under CEQA pursuant to Section 15061b3. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I see no takers on the council dais at the moment. Sure, Ms. Councilmember Zara.
I have, thank you, Matt, for the presentation. I just have one question. Has there been any applications put out so far for any, since the original ordinance was passed?
No, so we have withheld application release pending the results of tonight's action.
All right, I see nothing further. So at this point, I would open the public hearing and invite any member of the public to provide commentary on this.
Is this where we get to speak, sir?
If you please, involving this item, of course.
Yeah, anyone who wants to speak on this item that's in chambers, please come to the microphone over here in the corner, and if there's more than one of you, you can line up and then wait for your turn.
I think their item is 15, right, Mayor?
Right, right. That's what I thought, okay.
This is for short-term rentals.
I just wanted to ask a question. I wanted to know what the reason behind terminating it, like getting a little bit more background on the short-term rental as to why this came up. Was there a problem with the renters, or what happened with that?
Very good question. Pardon?
Can I say something by saying you're in the media?
Well, sure, I think any council member could try to provide an answer to the speaker on this. Miss, in my opinion, and I'm someone who doesn't want to see the city become known for bans, restrictions, and prohibitions, particularly in the modern economy, which is a very transactional and more free capability to utilize services and purchase products. And so to me, there is a fear here, and I understand, I think it comes from a good place, which is existing residents would have some concerns about...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Forgive me. Did we close the public hearing? I mean, or are there more comments online?
We have not. But I see no one coming forward to speak, and we will switch to online. If you'd like to provide an answer to her, you're free to do so. Okay. So in this case, I think it comes from a good place, which is for existing residents and neighborhoods, a concern that these would become party houses and that they would be a source of steady disruption, and that without the owner of the property being present, that this would become a chronic situation. Your question was, has there been a problem? And I feel in earlier council meetings, we proved definitively that there has not been an overriding problem. So this is being moved forward in anticipation of those problems by a majority of the council. Okay, so with that, do we have Zoom comments available, Madam Clerk?
We do. I'm going to call on Jonah first.
Hi, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I would also like to respond to the previous speaker. I actually think that at previous hearings, you have heard concerns from neighbors, not just about prospective short-term rentals, but about the actual impacts they've experienced as well from short-term rentals in their neighborhoods. But additionally, you've also heard from many residents about the challenges with finding housing in the community, and so I think that's part of what has shaped this consideration as well. So again, my name's Jonah Breslow, and I work with Lain, the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy, and I urge you to pass the staff recommendation that the council originated and ban whole-home rentals. I've spoken before you many times, and the housing crisis has only gotten worse. This law would enable you to preserve 325 homes for long-term tenants and owners and also protect the neighborhoods surrounding them from adverse impacts. Cities like Irvine and Garden Grove have totally banned short-term rentals, and Fullerton would join cities like Santa Monica that have focused on allowing home sharing as a compromise measure that helps protect long-term housing and the neighborhoods from the kinds of noise and other impacts that you experience with short-term rentals. So I feel that this proposal today is an excellent measure that will protect housing and communities, the communities that rely on them. Please pass the recommendation to ban whole-home rentals. Thank you very much.
George M., please unmute.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, well, my name's George Mangia, and I grew up in Fullerton, went to all the high schools, college, and I'm a resident. And it's always been a really nice college town. You know your neighbors, you know your neighborhood, and things have changed. But I think it's just a bad idea to have home, short-term rentals, because you don't know your neighbors, you don't know who's there, and that's kind of a lot of changes. I work at Disneyland, I've been here in Orange County my whole life, and yes, you know, I'd be glad to share, you know, if I could, my home with somebody, but not leave it alone, because I want to take care of it. I want my neighbors to feel safe with me and know what's happening, like I have been there, growing up here in Fullerton. Love the city, still has a big thing in my heart for it, you know, that's just where I grew up, and I just don't want it to be turned into where I don't know a lot of people driving in and out of driveways, going down the street. And there will be issues by these short-term rentals that people don't care about the residents. They pay and they go away, so we don't need that, so please pass this law. It's needed for residents, it's needed for your guys' city, my city, and I really support that we pass this ordinance, and thank you for letting me speak.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Whitaker and Councilmembers. My name is Jordan Sisson. I'm a CEQA land use attorney, speaking on behalf of Unite Here Local 11, who fully supports this amendment. Banning whole-house rentals is the most responsible way to, one, address the legitimate housing and CEQA concerns here; two, allows residents significant profits by allowing owner-occupied short-term rentals; and three, promotes the public welfare. For this reason, we ask council to approve the amendment, which is a measured solution that balances property interests of owners with the housing and quality of life interests of the public. In my remaining time, I'd like to address some of the opposition expressed by Planning Commission. Today, we submitted a detailed response highlighting seven key factors that the Commission did not consider in its deliberation. We also emailed the entire council a summary of those points earlier today. For sake of irreverity, I will only quickly highlight those issues very briefly. First, unions have standing. Local 11 has roughly 100 members who live and work in the city and are stakeholders in this matter. They have just as much right to advocate on zoning and CEQA matters as developers, community organizations, and other individual residents do. Second, short-term rentals were unpermitted before the ordinance was adopted. The plain reading of the Municipal Code 15.17.020(c) prohibits uses not expressly permitted, such as short-term rentals and whole-house rentals, before the ordinance was adopted. Third, short-term rentals and whole-house rentals are not residential housing units. The code makes clear that short-term rentals are not dwelling units that provide housing opportunities for individuals and families to live on a permanent basis. Four, banning whole-house rentals is a minimal restriction. Courts have upheld total bans on short-term rentals as a minimal restriction on property rights. Here, the amendment only bans whole-house rentals and still allows profitable owner-occupied short-term rentals. Fifth, the potential loss of housing stock is relevant and significant here. By banning whole-house rentals, you will protect 325 housing units from becoming de facto hotels. Six, potential noise impacts are very real CEQA impacts. City residents, planning staff, and numerous reports confirms this issue with short-term rentals. The best way to avoid these noise impacts is to have the short-term rental occupied by the host, because hosts have vested interests in timely addressing these noise impacts. This is also cost-efficient for the city. Seventh and finally, the common sense exemption is very vulnerable here. The exemption can be defeated by a reasonable argument of potential impacts. Here, facts, studies, and expert comments show a reasonable argument of both housing and noise impacts, particularly with whole-house rentals. The amendment fixes that. In closing, Local 11 thanks the city for the opportunity to work cooperatively with the city to come up with a measured solution, and that's what this amendment is. Please approve the amendment, and thank you for your consideration, and I will submit.
Thank you.
Lupe, please unmute.
Okay, how about now?
You're good.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Thank you for this opportunity to come here and speak with you regarding this. I am a, I have lived in Fullerton, I'm a resident of Fullerton my whole life, my family is all here in Fullerton, so we love the city. I went to school here, I graduated from Cal State Fullerton, and I made sure that my children grew up in Fullerton, because I love the education I received, I wanted them to be able to experience the same thing. I wanted them to experience the good town, and again, knowing your neighbors, knowing who's around, a safe city where you could go around and let your kids go down to the corner without being concerned you knew who your neighbors were. I purchased my home in Fullerton as a single mother, and I love living here. There's been a lot of changes, and again, change is good, but again, we also need to keep an eye on what type of changes we're making. I support the proposal to stop the short-term rentals, and it's because I want my grandchildren to have the opportunity to grow up with neighbors they know and that they can trust. I don't want my neighborhood to become a money-making motel hotel atmosphere for investors who don't care what happens to our neighborhoods. You know, I really want to keep a residential type of atmosphere, not seeing, you know, strangers coming in and out of homes, not knowing who they are or, you know, what their intentions are while they're here, being that they're only here for a short time, and then they leave our city. I have experienced an investor purchasing a property on my block and renting it out to students, because I do live close to Cal State Fullerton, and again, I appreciate the students and their learning and the experience they're having, but this home was destroyed, and they would leave after the school season was over. And the investors, of course, you know, they must have made a good profit, would put the house back together as best as they could and rent it out to students again. And again, the same thing, parties that came over to my residence, you know, students urinating on my property. And I know that's not the same thing with these short-term rentals, but again, I've experienced, you know, the whole thing of having, you know, people come in that don't really belong here in the neighborhood just for a short term, coming to enjoy our neighborhood but also not caring, you know, what they're doing to the neighborhood. So again, I just want to say thank you for the time, for letting me be here to speak and to share my experience, and really my hope that we can keep our city safe for my grandchildren and for other children in the neighborhood, so that they can also experience what I grew up with. You know, I love the city of Fullerton, and I hope to live here for the rest of my life, you know. This is the best city that I've actually visited and enjoyed. So thank you for your time, and I hope that we move in the right direction. Thank you.
Adam Overton?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, city councilors. My name is Adam Overton, I'm a faith-rooted organizer with CLU, Clergy and Lady United for Economic Justice, and we're just calling in today in behalf of the faith community to speak in support of tonight's ordinance. We highly encourage you to pass it. The residents, the homes, the neighborhoods of Fullerton are the bedrock of this community. What we've seen in Fullerton and in cities across the country is that unrestricted short-term rentals and unenforced restrictions have led to the erosion and hollowing out of communities across the country. We need to make sure that the people of Fullerton and of Orange County can and want to remain here in their homes for generations to come, like the last speaker was saying. And we need to make sure that with the incredible housing crisis that we have, with prices moving well above what most working people can afford, that we hold on to whatever affordable housing we can for people, for real people, for the people of Fullerton to actually live in. The people of Fullerton, we risk in not passing this, we risk having the people of Fullerton become slowly the people of another city far away where the rent is much cheaper. And so the decision tonight really has to do with, who is Fullerton? Is Fullerton, are Fullerton residents the folks who live here already and the folks who want to continue to have families here despite the rising prices to live in California? Or is this, is the community going to continue more and more to become hollowed out by these short-term rentals? It appears that doing these home-share things really can work and in fact can help people who are struggling to fill a room, to make some extra income, but doing the full home shares does not, will not benefit our communities. So we thank you so much for taking this ordinance, stopping, considering this, and yeah, we wish you a great evening, and we look forward to hopefully seeing you pass this ordinance. Good evening.
Thank you.
Hector Rodriguez? Hector Rodriguez?
Hola, buenas tardes. Gracias por esta oportunidad, señores comisionados.
Hello, and good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to the commissioners.
Hola, mi nombre es Hector. Hector Rodriguez, y yo soy desempleado por causa de COVID-19.
Hi, my name is Hector. Hector Rodriguez. I'm unemployed because of COVID-19.
En estos momentos difíciles, alquileres a corto plazo perjudican a familias como la mía.
In these difficult times, short term rentals jeopardize families like mine.
Mientras luchamos por encontrar una vivienda, por favor, vote sí en esta ley que va a ayudarnos a todos.
As we are fighting to try to find housing, please vote yes on this law that's going to help all of us.
Gracias nuevamente por esta oportunidad. Buenas tardes.
Thank you once again for this opportunity, and good evening.
Tanya McRory?
Good evening, council. My name's Tanya McRory. I just wanted to chime in here. I'm very, very concerned that we have a bunch of Anaheim lobbyists and unions weighing in on what Fullerton should and can be. Feel free to go to your own city council and talk about what you want for Anaheim, but you don't get to say what we do in Fullerton. And my husband and I ran an Airbnb out of our Fullerton home. It was a wonderful experience. It was very affordable. It allowed young couples to come to Disneyland and not have to pay a fortune in the hotels. It was extra income for us. We did it for a couple of years. We didn't have a single problem. We chose not to do it anymore because we, we enjoyed the experience and our other business was too busy. But there was not one problem, not one neighbor complaint, not one fight, not one outbreak, and all this nonsense about, you know, people going on vacation and renting a property are not there to party and piss on your lawn. It's just not what's happening. And I think we all know that because a lot of us have used Airbnb and other vacation rentals. So it just really concerns me when we get a bombardment of people from outside of our city telling us what our city should look like and how we should run it. So I wanted to weigh in as a Fullerton resident who has actually done Airbnb. I do see that there are some concerns about potentially not putting a limit to how many Airbnbs we can have, because I fear that outside landlords would come in and buy a property and just turn them into these moneymakers, and that would affect neighborhoods. So I think that's something to be considered, but I just, I don't go to other people's city and tell them how to run it. And I think that Fullerton should take care of Fullerton. So thank you so much, and I hope you take all Fullerton residents' comments into consideration. Thank you.
Austin?
Yes, good evening, honorable council members. Austin Lynch from Unite Here Local 11. I hear the, I hear Tanya dismissing union members who live in Fullerton as being outsiders because they belong to a union, and I think that's really outrageous. And I think it's, you know, I don't know where she gets off deciding that, that working people are outsiders just because they, they oppose illegal businesses in neighborhoods.
Sir, sir, could you please not personalize this with another caller? Please address the council on whatever issues you'd like to discuss.
I think that the majority of the council stands with people who are union members, stands with working people, and doesn't dismiss them, and we really appreciate that. And I think that you honor a union member's right to speak up on issues like housing. And I think that you, the majority don't dismiss us, and, and I want to thank you for doing that.
Thank you for your comments.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, there are no more speakers.
Okay. With that, Ms., I'm sorry, but we only allow speaking once to an item.
I was only asking about a question, though, because he didn't really, like, speak on the issue, because I didn't have no idea about it. So I didn't really say a comment. I was just asking a question regarding what he was saying.
You didn't use your full three minutes, and, and I tried to provide an answer to you. Can you be brief with your follow up here, please?
So just to kind of follow up with what everybody was saying, I think the housing crisis is such a big thing within our community, especially within Fullerton. And I think when we look at the community members and we look at the community that we have currently, we have to choose people over profit always. And although it's great for the community members that are, the homeowners that have these homes, that's a potential, over 300 homes we could put back into the market and get more people to come in and live in our community and, like, create families in our community. And I've lived in Fullerton. I went to school here. I went to UCLA. I came back home. I moved in with my parents. I have money for a down payment, but there's no homes that are affordable to me. And I'm not the only one. There are so many people who grew up in Fullerton who have forced to come back and live with their parents instead of buying a home in Fullerton and creating families here and communities here. So I think it's really important that we create spaces and create homes for this next generation that's trying to live in Fullerton as opposed to trying to make a profit for people who already live in Fullerton. That's all I wanted to add.
All right, thank you. With that, we have no more commenters. I will close the public hearing, bring the matter back to the city council.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
I just want to say hello to Ms. Maddie over there and her family. I can't, I was trying to recall when she was in my class, but I couldn't. But anyway, thank you for coming back, and it's great to see the, the next generation of Fullertonians coming back. And with that, I'll, I'll wait for our, to speak on it later.
Okay. Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, mayor and council. As far as I can gather, in terms of short term rentals, I know that we've been over this time and time again. And it's surprising that it's been on the docket for as long as it has, but I think it's a short sighted approach to property rights. I believe they're a product of our obsession with convenience and social media. They erode at our sense of community and our identity as a city. You know, sometimes people are so busy taking pictures of their dinner, they often ruin a great moment trying to show everybody what they ate. So with that, I'd like to approve the ordinance with the amendments as shown to the Fullerton Municipal Code to ban whole house rentals and exempt the, from sequo. I think it's what we, we had to also do.
And I'll second that, Mr. John.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Sure.
I found it interesting that the, you know, the union lobbyists that spoke used the phrase "shaped the conversation", because the reality is that this dialogue that we've had with the community for the past five years, you know, they had more than enough opportunities to weigh in at the time. You know, instead, you know, they used a lot of talking points, both tonight and in previous discussions, that were long on conjecture and short on facts. You know, the, the beauty of the free market is that it gives us options. But here, this governmental body would actually be limiting those options available for property owners and for renters, all because of a shakedown, strong arm tactic from a union who's trying to protect their employees. They certainly understand where they're coming from, but it's up to us to look out for Fullerton residents and for Fullerton taxpayers. You know, this is, this is a policy where, a regulatory policy that would have allowed for limited short term and whole house rentals was reasonable. For example, we've got about 46,000 housing units in the city of Fullerton, and the cap, or using 325 units or 325 houses as a cap on the maximum of short term rentals, it's actually under 0.7% of the housing stock to show you what a small impact that is. You know, but again, it does matter because facts matter. Statistics matter.
Pardon, please.
So, so again, because facts matter, because this is heavily, I think, built into the, the circumstances that we're dealing with, you know, people want to come out and throw these sensational talking points where there is absolutely no factual basis into what they're suggesting, because of, of course, they had the opportunity to provide facts and they didn't. You know, they, they tried to threaten us with a lawsuit and tried to kind of stymie our private property rights in that sense. So, you know, the ordinance that was passed was fair. It was reasonable, and it was balanced. And so I don't understand, you know, my, my hope is that some of my colleagues here on this dais tonight will change their mind because property rights matter. And this, this policy that was proposed, I think the Planning Commission, I think the various bodies here at the city that worked on it over the years got it right. And so this is just pure overreach, and so to throw away the rights of Fullerton homeowners, Fullerton in, Fullerton property owners and Fullerton taxpayers because of a union, you know, scare tactic, I, I just find absolutely repulsive. And so I hope that my colleagues will join me in voting no on this item tonight.
Councilmember Zara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The unions are there to advocate for working families, just like big businesses have also their lobbyists that are advocating for them. And so I, I, I think that there is a balance in our community when we have advocates as such. As far as the members of Unite Here 11, I think we believe a lot of them are in South Fullerton, in my district, folks working, families who primarily work down in Disney, but they live here in our city. We have over 100 members of Unite Here who are residents of Fullerton, and I believe they also deserve a decent and dignified living. And so when we erode at our housing stock, I believe that is not providing for all our residents, but only for a few who can afford the big houses. Now, I do want to also say that the issue has been that majority of these properties are not, as we've seen in other cities, are not necessarily, as this kind of snowballs, Fullerton residents who happen to own a home and want to move somewhere else and keep it and rent it out. These are outside businesses that are now forming and coming in and buying housing stock and creating these corporate entities that are owning multiple properties throughout the world. And Fulton is a very lucrative place for these businesses because we are adjacent to both Anaheim and Buena Park that has theme parks. So I think that we, certainly, I've heard, I know we've, we've, we've heard here from a few community members, but I've heard from so many communities throughout the last two years. The original ordinance that was passed last year was done as a way of a compromise because we went through so many discussions over this. It was a compromise solution that I was not necessarily satisfied with, but at the moment, it was the only thing that we, we could achieve with the council at the time. So I, my inclination is to make sure that we are protecting our housing stock, making sure that we're protect, a very precious one, and making sure that we're also allowing for dignified living for our residents who, who deserve to have decent neighborhoods and, and not have outsiders come in and take over these neighborhoods, whether they're the property businesses that are forming to, to buy these properties or the renters that are coming in. I would, if, if we are to encourage economic development, I'd rather have us invest in, in, in real hotels and real tourism for our city to bring in those dollars. I want to remind folks that this is a, a ban on, the recommendations are a ban on whole house rentals, meaning you can still, if you own the house and live in it, you can still rent out your, your rooms if you have a large space, if you have a, an accessory dwelling unit, you can still rent those out. So there's still a lot of room for, for, for this type of, of activity and then touristic activity. So I'm glad this has come back to us, and I certainly would be supportive of it tonight.
I heard some comments tonight by some of the callers who talked, and this is fairly disturbing, I think, just the notion of people who don't belong here in a city like Fullerton, as diverse as we are, catering to all generations. I'm, I'm not sure who exactly it would be that doesn't belong here in Fullerton. I know that when my wife and I travel abroad, we like to live the way that the locals live. And fortunately, in many of those areas, there are more resort locations, and they have an abundance of bed and breakfasts, which works fine for a couple like us. We've had some very good experiences that way. But Fullerton has really a lack of bed and breakfast opportunities. I heard comments about working families, people of limited means, and how this supposedly prevents them from being able to afford a residence here in Fullerton. The low number that we have of short term rentals, if all those properties are sold as, as long term residence for people, it would not, it would have such a negligible effect on property values. I think sometimes these promises are made that, gee, if we stop this, that somehow the price of homes is going to become much more affordable. I don't, I don't see that at all. The secondary issue of property rights and allowing people to do, to attain the highest and best use for their properties is something that is being very much impeded by such actions as this council is ready to approve. It seems to me that when we foreclose options like that, what we're doing is putting a wall around Fullerton and saying, stay out. This is our place. And if you don't belong here, keep away. The, so, so many of the very same people who have trouble with this concept of short term rentals are very much advocates of high rise, high density construction all over the city, and aggressive urbanization of the city, which I would propose creates the very same outcomes that they're so worried about with short term rentals. Is people coming and going, strangers, people who you don't know, maybe people, again, labeling others who don't belong here. So I, I find it very interesting that, that contradiction at work here this evening. But with that, we did have a motion. Do we? And that was by Councilmember Jung, and that was seconded by Councilmember Silva. So if there's nothing further, Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll.
Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor for Tim Dunlap?
No.
And Mayor Whitaker?
No.
And motion passes three to two, and I'll take this opportunity to read the title of the ordinance. It is ordinance number 3298, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Fullerton, California approving amendments to the Fullerton Municipal Code Title 15 to regulate short term rental uses citywide.
And with that, we are on to item number 15, with presentation, I believe, by David Langstaff, Senior Traffic Engineering Analyst. This would be parking regulations on Valencia Drive. So I know some people have been long awaiting this. Thank you, Ms. McQuaid.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. The item for your consideration is obviously the parking regulations on Valencia Drive. And with that, I'll turn it over to David Roseman, our city traffic engineer.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Dave Langstaff, I'm not, I'm Dave Roseman, but...
I saw him earlier.
Yeah, a lot of people get the names mixed up, especially when we talk to each other and call each other Dave. We get really confused. So tonight, we're talking about a Transportation and Circulation Commission recommendation to make permanent a series of pilot parking regulations on Valencia between Raymond Avenue and State College. And I think, go to the next slide. Oh. Did I hit? Okay, so can we go into the next slide, next slide? Thank you. So just a quick... So just a quick, just a quick historical background. In summer of 2019, the Fullerton Police Department requested assistance from the Traffic Engineering Division in developing a series of parking restrictions to address parking complaints and safety issues on Valencia Avenue. In October of 2019, the TCC reviewed and concurred with the City Traffic Engineer on a series of recommendations for a pilot set of parking restrictions. Those parking restrictions were then implemented. And around January of 2020, based on feedback received from businesses along Valencia, it was agreed to modify the pilot slightly to better accommodate business needs. And then in March of 2020, parking enforcement was suspended as part of the city's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And so essentially, the pilot ceased to exist at that point. And then in February of this year, the TCC reconsidered the pilot program and voted to recommend permanent adoption of the modified pilot parking restrictions to City Council. And at your March, early March meeting of this year, you considered the matter and postponed the decision till tonight. The next slide. These are some pictures from back from 2019 of what looked like out there. There was a lot of truck activity, trucks parking in the center, in the center, two-way left-turn lane, parking on corners, things of that nature. If we could go to the next slide. There was also cars that were out there from auto body shops and other places, there were cars in disrepair. And then to the next slide. Then there were also long-term parking that was occurring and trailers parking out, out on the street as well. So if we can go to the next slide. So in, kind of in summary, the program elements before you today are to try to better divide up parking areas in the area to, to support businesses. So that has four separate program elements. The first is to create dedicated three-hour commercial parking zones along the north side of Valencia to accommodate semi-trucks and, and, and other types of large vehicles. Create dedicated two-hour parking zones along the south side of Valencia, west of Acacia, to allow for business access in and out, temporary parking. And provide long-term unrestricted parking along the south side of Valencia, east of Acacia and on Sally Place for employees and others that are there for, for a longer period of time. And then prohibit parking in areas necessary to maintain access, circulation, and safety. The program results that I have here, these are really from the short time the pilot was in, in operation back in 2019 and 20. There was a significant reduction in the occurrence of illegal parking and unsafe vehicle movements. It increased the availability of on-street parking for businesses and trucks, and it reduced the complaints and calls for service. So if we go to the next slide. Basically, today, we have representatives from Public Works, the Police Department, and Community Development to answer any questions you may have. And then if you go to the last slide, that's just the, the, the area again. So that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Councilmember Jung.
Just wanted to make sure, please don't sit down. I, I'm going to make you stand a little bit longer. I apologize in advance. I just want to make sure that the narrative that's being painted, that this is an RV parking ordinance, that's not. The, this parking, these parking restrictions are, are, impact commercial trucks just as much so as any RV, correct, sir?
Yeah, that's correct. It's, it's in order to create better order along the street for parking and parking availability.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so we'll have to open public, no?
It's regular business.
Oh, it's regular business, okay. Great. Public comments for this item. If there's anybody with questions, please come forward. Questions or comments?
And if we have anyone else who'd like to speak, please line up on the walls so we can keep track of who's coming up next.
Please go ahead.
My name is James Stump, and I'm living currently over on Walnut Avenue, Walnut Way, that has been grouped with this Valencia deal of trying to eradicate the motorhomes. I do understand that these are already active laws, then they are for the trucks and this and that, but the fact is that you have people, obviously, that in this time, we can't afford to get rent to live somewhere. You know, I'm fighting for disability myself, I had a stroke, and it's been quite challenging for me just to, just to keep me and my dogs in, in home. I'm here currently in Fullerton because I've spent over 15 years in Fullerton, not consistently, but almost two years this time. I first got sober in Fullerton, I love it, I love the area, it did a lot, helped save my life. And I'm back here, my mother lives in Whittier, and now I'm here trying to be with family and take care of things. I'm over five and a half years sober, and I, I consider myself to be a benefit to the community. My question is, is the intention then to just basically push the buck forward? My understanding is that, that Garden Grove had, had, had pulled this, they made it illegal for the RVs, and supposedly, they came here. And now, my understanding is that you guys are just trying to pass the buck, but there's no solutions being created, there's no, this is a group of people that once you kick us out, we're homeless. You know, I, I can't afford to move it five, five times a day and get ticketed hundreds of dollars a week. And I don't know what to do. I'm scared for my life, my livelihood. I don't want to be homeless, and you guys just made it illegal to be homeless in Fullerton. I mean, I know the deal around here, people, and, you know, I've, I've been around here for some time, and there is many different people here. It isn't just these artists and the booze parks and all this and that. I understand that there are people that create a lot of mess, and those are individuals that should be taken on the individual level. If that is a problem, maybe you guys could address the issue and actually provide something, a container. There are no actual public trash cans, and there's no container. What I see you guys doing is just trying to shut the problem out and make it go away, but you're not actually trying to help us. We're people, living people, in fear of being homeless, you know, of losing everything we have, I'm fighting disability, a lot of us are fighting for everything, this is it, this is my life, right here. So I'm just, I'm, I'm asking you guys to, to at least examine a potential alternative for us people who have nowhere else to go, who are trying to make it through these times like any other American. I'm an American, and I don't feel like I'm being treated like an American. I feel like, I feel, I feel like a piece of trash. Thank you for letting me speak, people.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir, James, over here. Have you been connected to any services or approached for, for any services or?
I was enrolled in that safe parking program. That really didn't work because how do you keep a car and the motorhome, and I don't, I live by myself, to move the motorhome to somewhere else, to go, to walk back, to get a car, to go, be able to go care for my mother, to be able to get back into the RV, but then you got to move the car. It was just a big hassle, it was more of a, it was smoke and mirrors. It was a, it was a Fullerton's way of saying, oh, we're trying, but you really weren't. And having to move it every day, cost the gas and the money.
Right. I, I want to, I want to recommend, if, if maybe you can connect with one of our staff members, and maybe see if there's other solutions for you. Would, I'd be, if, maybe Kelly, would you be able to connect with the gentleman?
Yeah, because it doesn't seem like anybody's come out and offered anything. All we get is the cops coming and, and giving us a thing saying, you have to be out of here in two days, you know? And it's, it's like, you know, it's, you know, I'm on medication, bipolar manic depressive, you know, with anxiety disorder, you know, constantly being pressured about whether you're going to be homeless is so hard, you know? And so, you know, we really are just people. You know, how certain people are dealing with it is one thing. I'm just a man trying to make it through my, my, my way and, and, you know, be good by the Lord.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Hi. I would like to talk also, kind of follow up on what he was saying about this camping ordinance. Now, it was my understanding from the last meeting that this was postponed, that this, it was postponed for the reason that there would be discussion about more possible solutions. There's a lot of people out there in Fullerton and campers that are kind of frustrated because this, this area in Valencia isn't the only one that's been closed down. There's sections of road over by the Fullerton Hotel and over near the area by the East Fullerton, the SB2 zone, that have had signs go up, and the campers have moved out of there. I've talked to a lot of people on the streets with campers that felt like the, the pilot program in our Santa Fe Park didn't really, wasn't even functional, just because of all the restrictions and the, the permit and the, it just didn't feel safe. So I hope there should be, at least with this proposal, there should be some discussion about possible solutions to go along with it.
It's okay for me to remove my mask this week? Okay. All right, Mayor Whitaker and council members, thank you for your time this evening, and thank you for, for your service to the city and community. My name is Carrie Johnson, I live in, I guess, South Fullerton is where you would place me. In comparison to the other complex and really heart-wrenching issues that have been raised tonight, I think my concern seems very benign and possibly tone deaf, so I apologize in advance. My wife and I have been residents of Fullerton for three years. We purchased a condominium in Fullerton, we moved from Placentia here. We've been very pleased with this community, it's, it's a great place. You've referenced its diversity, you referenced its culture, we love this place, and we're going to make it our lifelong home. All my interactions with city staff, public safety has been excellent. I really strongly suggest and promote the Fullerton app, it is a great way to crowdsource keeping our community safe and clean. But I'm here because it's speaking to the situation in Walnut. Our condo is on that, on Walnut Avenue. And when we first moved in three years ago, there were a collection of RVs down at the northeast end, then over time, it grew. And to the point now, there's several right in front of our condominiums as well. And I understand this is not meant to disparage or be disrespectful of any of the other citizens who are here speaking, promoting their, their side, but there is lots of trash. I've called and used the Fullerton app many times to get that cleaned up. And Mayor Potem Dunlap, you talked about property rights, and part of being a citizen of any municipality is that we cede some of our authority and our taxes, and then you provide that public good, whether it's safety, security, that kind of thing. And so I think that's where the relationship is. And I think there are solutions to this, I'm willing, my wife and I are willing to give funds, time, whatever, to help support all citizens, whether they're unhoused or not, but there has to be a solution. I would just ask you to find a solution for that, we're willing to be part of that solution. But currently, it's just kind of untenable, the way it's been, it's been going on, so. And I'm not someone, I'm a very laid-back person, the fact that I'm here speaking is probably making my wife cringe because I don't respond, I don't feel compelled to respond to situations like this. And I also want to compliment you guys, you're dealing with lots of complex issues. I also work in a public entity, and what we deal with pales in comparison to what you're handling, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any other speakers in the chambers? I see none. Oh, wait, one more.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. I just want to say that maybe consider the other businesses that work on cars, and they have all the, their cars parked out on the street, and it seems as though they're targeting the people and campers other than the, everybody on the street. Because they have like 20 cars parked out when they're working on their cars at their businesses. And so it's, it's something to take into consideration that it's not just the campers, it's everybody. There's other people, there's businesses that park, and are they getting ticketed? I don't know. I'm not sure, but it's something to consider. I live out of a RV, and I have a couple of them, and me and my significant other, we were fixing them up and trying to sell them for people that can't afford housing, and I think that we're being targeted, and they don't understand our situation as much, and it's too much to get into, but thank you for giving us this time that we've had to try to get our lives back, and good night.
Thank you for your comments. And Madam Clerk, Zoom callers?
Mr. Mayor, there are no Zoom callers.
With that, I'll bring the item back to the council for discussion. Looks like Councilmember Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, mayor and council. I, I don't think anybody would disagree that freedom is a right, not a privilege. You have the right to be free, but with that right comes an enormous amount of responsibility. Those people just see the amenities that freedom affords us but are unwilling to share in the responsibility. A free woman or a free man has to consider their actions more. Is it right? Is it right or a right to occupy a street? You know, you say if we remove this, the eloquent speaker earlier, if we enforce this ordinance, you would be homeless. Does that plot a street, then? Is that your home? Is it right or a right to disturb neighboring businesses and residents without recourse? You probably aren't familiar with the term Nantucket Sleigh Ride, it comes from the days when whaling was commonplace in this country. You harpoon a whale, and that whale is supposed to be brought to the ship. But every blue moon, that whale that's harpooned has a mind of its own, is so massive and headstrong, it drags you further out to sea, and you have to hold on and go for the ride. You are literally forced to hang on for dear life until this whale either gets tired or you hit Greenland. Parking on Valencia, and by virtue of it, Walnut and other streets in our city, has grown into a Nantucket Sleigh Ride. The system is broken, and rather than take the time to spend the effort to fix it, we'd much rather shovel money in hopes that it fixes itself. But our residents cry for justice on this matter, and I think that enforcing these parking regulations is just the start. So I would move forward and make a motion to recommend and enforce these parking regulations. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I'll, I'll second the item.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? Yeah, no, when, I think with this item came up about a month ago, we, we, you know, the council did push it forward to now, to give the, some of the nonprofits a chance to go out there and help some of the residents there on the street, some of the people who are, that are living their RVs, a chance to relocate, to help them out, and they were able to help some, and not others. And I can speak for myself and Mr. Jung, we've been out there, and some of the, the, the debris out there is really tough to handle. And, and this, it's not that, at least for me, I'm not, I'm not being, trying to be a hard head or hard to the people there, but we, we have, Fullerton has done a lot, and we will continue to advocate to house people. We've, we've got a recuperative center now that we, there's beds for people who are experiencing homelessness. We, we also had a safe parking, we were the first city in, in Orange County to have a safe parking space. And actually, we are the first city in, in Orange County to have a recuperative center. And we've had the armory open for over 30 years where we can house some homeless people. And again, we've been working quite a bit with the Tri Parish to try and solve some of these, some of these issues, and they're not easy issues to, to address. I, I know that this council, current council figure has tried to address them since last year, but prior to that, we had tried to address them for countless years. So I think there is a time now where we have to allow, be able to enforce our ordinances and allow for, for the other people, the other residents, to enjoy the streets right away and be able to, to work and, and have their employees park, their businesses thrive, and not be, be ahead, not be in danger because of the RVs that are parked there illegally. And yes, we will also be addressing the, the body, auto body shop cars that are out there, people are working on them, this all, we'll address all that. So with that, you know, I'm, and, and it, just one question, we're passing this, I mean, we're, if this passes tonight, we still have to come back for a second reading, correct? Oh, it's a resolution, okay. So, so anyway, so with that, Mayor, I will be voting aye on the, on the measure.
Thank you. Councilmember Silva. Oh, sure. Councilmember Zara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, these are always very difficult decisions to make, and the last time we, you know, I, we gave an opportunity, at least some time to pass. do as much as they could. But, but life is unfortunately, you know, we can't help everyone and, and we hope we could, but that's oftentimes not the case. But as a governing body, we have to strike also a balance, and we also have to look at the other side, which is, you know, our other residents, who are also a part of this equation. And so I, I still encourage everybody who is in a RV or motorhome to really seek out our services, we may have still something for you, may, we, but I hope that you can also come to us as we have come to you in this last month through our nonprofits that, that really did a good job in their outreach. Again, your, our door is welcome and we will still continue to do as much as we can. We've done a lot of work in the last two years that, that I think, you know, far more than other cities in our region as well. And so we'll continue to do that, but for tonight, I think we, we need to move on with this, with this item unfortunately to some, but, but I hope, again, I hope you do reach out to us individually and then hopefully we can, we can find some solution. Thank you.
Anything to add, Mr. Mayor Potem? Indeed, there are some very insoluble problems in, in this city, and I think members of this council have been more than willing to try to accommodate and assist people in finding a better outcome. Many times, this means changing location. And while sometimes, you know, for a period of time, we can, we can allow or look the other way, understanding today's difficulties. In the longer haul, we are indeed victimizing other homeowners, renters, businesses, so many other people, and, and Councilmember Zara talked about the balancing, and it is time to balance. This situation really calls right now for those who find themselves without an option to seek and make available all possible solutions. There are many agencies and individuals and nonprofits that are trying to help solve these problems as well. But at least for the near term, it is important that, that we not still impose this burden on a few select areas in our city. And so our parking restrictions were created for that reason, to allow people to have safe and predictable circumstances in their neighborhoods. I think that all five members of this council will work doubly hard to try to help solve those who don't find an alternative. But in this case, I believe alternatives do need to be sought. And so I concur with fellow council members on this, we do need to return to enforcing our regulations, they've been created for the safety and the good of all of our citizenry, and it would be extremely unfair to continue to burden a small number of our residents to try to accommodate this further. And with that, Madam Clerk, we do have a motion and a second, and we would be ready for a roll call.
Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Dunlap?
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
Pass this 5-0.
And we are at item number 16, the last regular item on our agenda this evening, although we do have one more consent item that was pulled. This would be the subject Exclusive Negotiating Agreement with Renewable Farms at Union Pacific Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The item before you this evening is a consideration of an extension of an exclusive negotiating agreement with Renewable Farms for Union Pacific Park, as you'd mentioned. I do have a little bit of background on the site and then I want to make sure Erin Flora from Renewable Farms is also here and would be able to answer any specific questions that you might have. Little bit of background about the site, so about a 1.7 acre parcel that was purchased by the former redevelopment agency in the late 90s. There was soil contamination at the site and the Department of Toxic Substances has completed their report, this dates back to early 2000s, however, the soil contamination has been fully remediated. The property was transferred to the city through its long-range property management plan, which is part of the dissolution of redevelopment in 2011. This was completed in 2016. Within the long-range property management plan, it was recommended that the site is retained for city park use. This is an aerial photo showing the, the property in question, so for folks at home, the, the big street on the right-hand side is Harbor, the street on the south side is Trusslow, and then those are the train tracks on the north side, that's actually a portion of city-owned Rideway, Elephant Packing House, et cetera. So the area of the park is outlined in blue. Again, it's about a 1.7 acre parcel. A little bit about Renewable Farms, and I'll let Erin maybe fill in more details, but they're a nonprofit organization founded in 2008. They do have a location, an aquaponic farm operating in the city of Anaheim, and then they're just ready to get underway pretty soon with another location in the city of Eliso Viejo. The aquaponic farming is a raised bed farming. They also operate an event center that helps pay for a lot of the costs associated with the aquaponic farm, and they give away a majority, if not all, of the food that they grow and produce there. I won't spend too much time on this slide because I'll be stepping all over everything Erin would probably be saying, but there's a lot of advantages and community benefits to the aquaponic farm, outreach to the community, educational workshops for schoolchildren, people with special needs, veterans, et cetera. And then, as I had mentioned, all the food that's grown at their farm location in Anaheim is donated to local organizations, families, food banks, et cetera. This is a initial design concept that was prepared in 2020 for the site by 30th Street Architects, which is the architecture firm that Renewable Farms has contracted with to do the design. They have also done the design for their Eliso Viejo location and are familiar with the requirements for raised bed aquaponic farming. This site design is by no means final, and it is an initial concept that shows some open recreational areas on the far left, that would be on the west side, that would also certify some outdoor event center during private operations. The raised bed farms are sort of in the center in those rectangular features, and then on the right side, which would be the east, would be the building or structure that would house the event center portion as well as some outdoor deck. Again, this site design is a little bit up for future configuration based on the city's needs, council needs, and obviously renewable farming needs. This site will remain a public park and it will be through a lease agreement with Renewable Farms. And so as such, a portion of the site needs to remain available for parks and recreation uses, and Erin is familiar with this concept and does operate his aquaponic farm in Anaheim that allows for public to come in and view and take tours of the, the farming portion, and then we would have an open space portion that would be available at all times when the site is not being used for a private event. A little bit of background, the exclusive negotiating agreement that we're currently under was approved by the city council in November in 2019. It did allow for up to an 18-month negotiation period, which was to provide time for the development of plans for the site, demonstrating that there was adequate funds available by Renewable Farms for the construction of the site as it was proposed, and then negotiate preliminary deal terms for the lease or licensing agreement that would take place within the city and the Renewable Farms. They did hire 30th Street Architects to prepare the plan that I had previously just shown you, and they did receive a grant from St. Jude in the amount of $15,000, that was in February of 2021, so just a few months ago, to persist with grant writing to try to acquire construction funding. Obviously, the COVID-19 pandemic has put a, a big crimp in event centers, and so fundraising as well has been slowed. A lot of the progress that we had hoped to be making over the last 18 months has been challenging. However, there is sort of an exciting recent situation where they have an opportunity to bring on a business partner that does have some financial capacity to bring forward the Renewable Farms' concept and event center at a much faster pace. And Lynn Wagner is here, along with Erin, to talk about that a little bit further. The actions available to the council this evening, so the E&amp;A is set to expire on May 4th, so in a few weeks. It does take a city council action to renew the E&amp;A. We are recommending an additional six-month period, but we are open to recommendations from the council for that. Really, it's allowing us to continue that negotiation, this very recent event of bringing on this financial partner that has the financial capacity to build out the site in very short order, presents a very exciting opportunity, but we do know that there is a little bit of time to start to vet out those details, refine the site design, and then obviously negotiate lease terms, and we think a six-month term would be sufficient in order for us to do that. At the end of that six-month term, if, again, if we are not in a position to move forward, it would be up to the city council to either further extend the E&amp;A or to terminate the E&amp;A at that point. We also would be open to potentially a three-month period, and we have identified milestones within the E&amp;A to make sure that the project does continue to move forward. So the last slide, we are still confident that Renewable Farms' concept is a good fit for this area. It aligns well with the future specific plan that is proposed for the larger 35 acres, and we think that the recent addition of a financial backer is worthy of at least a three-to-six-month extension to see if we can continue to work out those financial and site planning terms. I'm, I'm available to answer questions, and again, Erin Flora with Renewable Farms is also available. Thank you.
Questions by members of council? Councilmember Zara?
Yes, just one question, thank you for the presentation and, and I'm looking forward to your further discussions, but just a question on the outreach to the community. I'm assuming the neighborhood will be involved in, and will have some input in the design as well, once we get to that stage. But I know that there hasn't been yet, I know I've been in contact with some of the, with the residents there.
Absolutely, we'd be happy, yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
If there are no other comments at this stage by members of the council, I would invite a public comment on this item. Anyone wishing to speak to this proposal, please come forward.
Good evening, city council members, Mayor. I am in favor of this development, I'm very excited, I couldn't even tell you. I've also brought with me other family members. This park has been closed for many, many years, and we're looking forward to seeing this green space preserved for our city, not just for us, but for the past people that are no longer with us, for the current people that are with us, and for our future. It's not a very big space, but we can do so much with it. During the pandemic, just to hear the birds, and just to give us a little bit of blue sky around us kind of kept me through working remotely and having to commute in between, and I'm willing to share. This is right across the street from my property, literally, I'm right in the center. And I've shared this with the parking community during the homeless shelter, we all agreed, let's let them stay, but it's time for us that have been there all, all of our lives, like I said, this park's been closed for like 23 years. And we did ask, we came to the city at one time and we asked the city to close the park for the reason that it was not, it was not developed in a way that was beneficial to the community members that live there. It was available to, for people to come out and live there. It was a huge bathroom, it was open 24/7, we had people shooting up, we had people coming to our houses, there was, there was no fence around, we did ask for that. As beautiful as it was, we were willing to live with a closed park all these years than to live with what we had to live with. And even then, we still walk our dogs and we share it with the people at the SoCo and we share it with the people from downtown, and we, we share it with the people with the high rides, I think on Santa Fe, right there by, the new, the new high rise by the parking, we share it. And we'd like to share it even more. We have some concerns, but I, I do trust that the development that has come forward is going to consider everything, and I've seen what Anaheim has done, and so, you know, life is too short, we need a little bit of green space, let's just preserve this, and we ask that you continue and go forward with this agreement. Thank you.
Hello?
Good evening.
I'm Erin from Renewable Farms. I couldn't have said it any better than that, thank you for saying that, it's a, it's a real honor to be working with you guys and partnered up in this agreement. I mean, it's exactly that, we just, we look for space to bring life to it and to bring communities in. We work with vets, disabled adults, homeless, lots of children, lots of schools, and everything we grow, we give away to the community. So as a nonprofit, we're just there to support the community. As Matt mentioned, we do events on the weekends and that supports the nonprofit, so we don't, we don't venture too far out into the fundraising world, we kind of found a nice little niche that works really well. And personally, I love that we can bring in people that just want to have an event, that just want to do life together, and then they can play a role in the nonprofit, and they know that that goes towards, you know, feeding families and stuff like that. So it's a really a cool synergy that we've created, and I love Fullerton, I met my wife here, I built my first farm in Fullerton, and it really is just an honor to be working with you guys. And the last 12 months has been challenging with the pandemic. We decided as a nonprofit just to really focus on growing food and giving it away. We also found a lot of our donors and partners weren't really interested in new ventures at the time, but I'm super excited to say that we have formed a very strategic partnership with a, or a business that we've been working with for a long time. I have Lynn here from 24 Carrots, and we decided, bringing them in as our exclusive event vendor, they can focus on the events and the revenue for the nonprofit, and we can just focus solely on keeping the space green, inviting the community in, and doing what we do best. So we're really, really excited about this partnership, and we're really hoping that you guys will extend this agreement so we can get going on it. So I'd like to invite Lynn to say a couple words.
Hello, thank you for having us again. Erin did pass out our letter of intent. We have, as Erin said, we've been working together for many years, but we have recently come together as this partnership and have been investigating how we can financially fund this park, and we are, we are a catering company and an event, venue company, we've been established for 16 years, and we have eight exclusive venues similar to this partnership throughout Orange County, so we are very well-versed in this type of partnership. Additionally, our heart is in the charity and the mission that Renewable Farms shares and brings to the community. So it is with that heart that we want to fund and financially back the support to build out this farm. There's certainly more terms and, and questions I'm sure you have to ask, but I'm here to answer any of those questions.
Thank you.
City Council, Mayor, my name is Glenn Sutter, and I've lived off and on in Fullerton, I just retired and that, and I live off of Trusslow, and I know Ms. Rose and that, and I think that this is a really good idea, and I think it's a good idea for the people that live there. I think they'll appreciate it, I think they'll really enjoy it, and I think they'll, they'll really, it'll really be a good thing, and that, thank you.
Good evening, Ed Nunez from 131 West Felicia Drive. On your plan there, and we just had, just talked about parking, I didn't see any parking on there, maybe a few, few spaces. If you go there right now, on Valencia and Trusslow, there is no parking right now. So if you have an event on the weekend, are you displacing, you know, the people that live there, where are they going to park? There's no, there's no plan for parking, you know, do you, what do you do with that? So that's my concern, is that you can't really park on Valencia and you can't park on Trusslow as it is right now. So if you're adding, I don't know how many people you're planning to do, like an event, 200, 300 people, I don't know where you're, where are you going to put those people? So that's just my concern, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Joseph Pfeifer, live on 147 West Ash. Kind of similar to the previous speaker, I mean, that area is already notoriously bad for parking, you can't, there's nowhere to park, and, you know, again, when you're having events, how does that work? You know, for me, just as, you know, I live there, I walked by that park, you know, I'd love to play basketball with my son there, but it's always chained off. You know, for me, you know, you're talking about public parks and then you're talking about financial investors and financial investors and nonprofits, and I just, I don't understand that concept and how that works exactly, but that immediately raises red flags to me, in the sense this is going to be turned into some, you know, again, an event center, hosting events. hosting events and weddings, and that's all well and good, again, but there's nowhere to park there already. Like, I walk by there all the time. There's zero parking there, and that's just going to bleed over. I'd say bleed over into Valencia, but there's nowhere to park there, and then it's going to bleed over, you know, into Ash, which is the next street over, which is, you know, that concerns me directly. And again, you know, I don't understand how public space is now going to be turned over to a financial investor running, you know, event centers. Like, to me, that's, that's not the intent of what that space should be. You know, I would say, why can't we leave it at a park and just enforce it and, you know, don't let people shoot up there? Don't let, you know, people move in there. Enforce, you know, some laws and, you know, that, to me, that would be a better use, to just leave it as a park, quite honestly, but that's all I have to say.
Good evening, mayor, city council. Tony Bouchala, longtime Fullerton resident. Several years ago, well, first of all, the Elephant Packing House that Matt mentioned earlier is a building that we bought in 1997. It's the first building placed on the National Register here in Fullerton, and it's an amazing building. And we've been trying for several years to do, to use that or to, to come up with an adaptive reuse of that building. We actually had the pleasure of meeting Ms. Wagner years ago because they were interested in, in putting in a, an event facility in the packing house. We came into an issue with parking. The question was, what about parking? Well, we couldn't really cross that bridge. Money was an issue as well. Then, a few years later went by, and we met a fellow by the name of Tyler King, who is a brewer. He started the brewery in Placentia. He started a brewery in Santa Barbara, a very successful brewer. We thought it was a great spot for a brewery, so I contacted Ted White, and Matt Fox came down to the meeting, and we walked through the building. Everybody loved the building, and the first question was, where's your parking? And I said, well, there's some public parking in the back, there's some public parking on the side. He said, that's not enough. Mr. Bouchala, you own that property over there, don't you? So we don't, we do own property around the area. I said, yes. He said, why don't you build a parking structure over there? So I don't think it's fair to the city government to pick winners and losers, who, who gets to put this there, you know, what, what goes here and what goes there. I'm just really disappointed in, in the way that I've been treated and my family's been treated over the years, how we've done a lot of good here in Fullerton, restored quite a number of buildings, historic buildings, placed them on the local register and national register, but we never get a break. It's, it's always the outside guy that comes in, like, oh, yeah, we'll roll over for you and play dead. You don't have to worry about parking. They're going to park in the neighborhood. To hell with parking. I just think you ought to terminate this E and A, and if you want to do anything, do an RFP, request for proposals, and see what the development community would propose for this site, or better yet, just keep it a park like the previous speaker said. Thank you.
Good evening, Fullerton city council members and Fullerton residents. My name is Priscilla Bravo-Fulman, and I was born and raised on Treslo, and I'm a product of Fullerton schools. A lot of what I have to say is in response to comments made regarding this topic, especially last week. Some comments bringing up the idea that residents in this community do not want renewable farms, green space, or the idea of apartments and even a parking structure. It is important for the council to consider three major items. First, investment into parks and community spaces in low-income communities of color is essential. Second, we can't ignore the benefit of green community space, especially with COVID and social distancing. And finally, the reminder that community space makes a stronger community. Anything but talk of community space should be non-negotiable. The land at Union Pacific Park should serve the community it was meant to serve, South Fullerton. It is important to renew the original plans for the farm in order to give this land back to the intended community, as long as the plans do intend to do so. Often, apartments are put in low-income areas, and they provide a handful of low-income units in exchange for a building that gentrifies a neighborhood, often pushing out many longtime residents. It is important to move our original plan forward for Union Pacific Park so the council does not trade a community space for a fraction of low-income living space or even a parking structure. This area we are discussing has Maple and Richmond Park close by, but we can't ignore the fact that not all parks in all areas are created equal. This area is densely populated, therefore should have more community space for its residents. A new report done by the Centers for American Progress explores the reality that people of color live in places with less immediate access to nature than white residents do. The report, led by the Hispanic Access Foundation, found that communities of color are almost three times more likely than white communities to live in nature-deprived areas than those that have less access to parks passing green spaces. Not only are green spaces an outlet for community members, but green spaces also improve one's health and general well-being. When I was younger, I remember Union Pacific Park was turned into a park, and there was this idea of a walking path, which never turned into fruition, and the park was closed for years. This park has often been overlooked and ignored by our council members. In order to see this area thrive, we needed the promise of organized and supervised activities. The city needs to focus its resources on programs instead of being afraid of potential threats the park may bring. I urge our city council to renew the plan with Renewable Farms as long as it does serve the community of South Fullerton. South Fullerton needs support. Lastly, I want to thank councilmember Zara for advocating for residents of South Fullerton and constantly going there to seek out what's best for that community. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Roscos, and I'd like to elaborate on some of the points that have been brought up thus far about the community that this renewable farm would serve. Not only is the community that it would serve low-income, but with that, I, I would like to bring up some of the health factors that it could bring for these low-income families, particularly the children and the schools that I hope that they would serve. I actually work at Juvenile Hall, so I work with young people who don't get enough access to resources and to services, to quality education, to quality activities to do after school, to adequate supervision. And so what I'm hoping for this program is that they would be able to provide some of these educational workshops and also just wonderful opportunities to give other, like, activities that our youth and our families could participate in. I think a lot of low-income people experience, not I think, it's actually proven with research, many low-income people experience far more, not only mental health but physical health issues than people who have access to better resources, not only including healthcare, but things like a renewable farm. I would hope that these educational workshops could talk about nutrition, could talk about balanced diet, and then that the, the food that would be produced there would be able to be distributed in our community of low-income families who don't have adequate resources and education, specifically with health and nutrition. So I think there, there's been talk about apartments or other developments. So for people who are concerned about parking, an apartment complex would amplify that. Sure, it would maybe have some parking spaces, but probably not enough to meet the needs of an entire development. So I think that parking is going to be an issue regardless of what we put in this space, and that's something that we can maybe discuss at another time or brainstorm around, but that should by no means be a barrier to this project. So I agree with moving forward with this agreement.
Hi. So I think I just have a question for you guys, a little bit more about the project. So I know you guys were speaking about it being partially a farm and then an event space, correct? Is there a reason for having?
Oh, Ms., would you please direct comments to the council?
Okay, so maybe you guys can answer. Is there a reason for it to be an event space as well as a, a farm? Or why, what was the reason for that?
That's a very good question, I think. Once the council brings this back, we'll be discussing.
Okay, yeah, just to kind of clarify, if we can talk about both of those, because I, I totally agree with the renewable farm and giving back to the community, but I don't see why we can't have that in a park and then leave a little portion of it, because this is a huge space. I mean, we're talking about an acre, over an acre, so, and having place for parking. So I don't know why we need to have an event space with a farm that helps the community. So if you guys can just clarify for that, please.
Thank you. And with that, Madam Clerk, any Zoom callers?
Matt Leslie.
Good evening, Mayor Whitaker and the council. I used to work for a nonprofit that funded itself partially through events, and from experience, I know that parking is, is a major, if not the major, issue. One of the other issues, of course, is noise or surrounding neighborhoods. So I had a question about what sort of outreach had been done to the adjacent neighborhoods in acquainting them with the idea that there would be regular weekend events that would presumably generate noise. I also have a very specific question. Is it contemplated in the city's rail district-specific plan that has not yet come to the council that developments in that area or some other kind of amenity in that area provided by the city or developer are supposed to provide parking for the events that are planned for this space under this negotia, whatever contract may come from this negotiation? Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the last digits, 1911.
Good evening, council, mayor, and staff.
Good evening.
My name is Ilse Miranda, and I like the idea of the project. I like the idea of bringing up to the community and giving out to the community. I rather see this type of projects than bringing maybe more multiple homes where there is lack of parking, where there is not, not so much events for the community and the youth. So the, my question will be, are, is this going to be like, maybe like Maple Community Center where, where, you know, there's after-school program offering, you know, they offer classes, mentoring, et cetera? Because if that's the case, I would love to see that in South Fullerton. We're not, we're not in Anaheim where there's literally no parking, so I don't know where you guys are coming from with, with the parking issue. If you're talking about Anaheim public space parking, then there, there is no parking. So I would like to see if you guys could maybe give us more information about that and if there's events. I think if it's for the community, we are, we love to see some of that in, in our neighborhoods. So thank you so much for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Mayor, there are no more speakers.
We will bring the item back to council for discussion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, just a couple of questions to, to the vendors. So there was an issue about the events. What's your timeframe for having events during weekends? When will they end? The noise factor, how can you, yeah, either one.
Councilman Silva, I think, and Erin is certainly welcome to answer, these would all be things that we would talk about through the lease agreement and lease terms, because as the city, as the property owner, we have ultimate control over making sure that events are not operating past certain hours. In terms of the number of events that would happen per year, we would have a lot of control and say in that, and so that would all be part of the lease negotiations. I think Erin and Lynn would probably agree. They understand that they're in a residential context, and so having that indoor space is exactly to address those noise concerns.
And so, I said, let me, in Anaheim, because I'm familiar with that place, what are your hours there? How late can an event go?
So as of right now in Anaheim, I do events on Saturdays and Sundays. Saturdays can go till 10:00 p.m., and Sundays can go till 8:00 p.m. And if I were to do something throughout the week, I usually just go till about sundown. The city allows me to go till 8:00 p.m. during the week, but we, we just primarily focus on the Saturdays and the Sundays.
Yeah. And could you, again, just explain why you need to have events?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, as a nonprofit, there's, there's a couple ways of getting revenue. I mean, we've got bills, we've got fish food and, you know, supplies and employees and utilities, like any other business. But as a nonprofit, we have the advantage of also, you know, writing grants and getting stuff like that. When I first started the farm, that's kind of the direction I was going, but to be honest, it, it's a very difficult world. If there's any nonprofit people in here, it's just galas and, you know, shaking hands and conversations. We, I feel like we got really fortunate to get introduced into the event space. Literally, someone just came up to me and said, hey, could I have my wedding at your farm? I charged them 500 bucks. They were so happy. We were so happy, because that's more money than we've gotten from selling, you know, heads of lettuce and carrots and stuff like that. So it just became this really great, this really great relationship between being able to run a nonprofit and not have to worry about getting donors to come in. So I actually, I see it as a really positive thing. Our farm in Anaheim has really built a great name for themselves, and, I mean, we're booked for the next two years out. We haven't even opened up an Aliso, and we already have some 35 weddings booked there right now. And for me, as a director for the nonprofit, that gives us the financial freedom to continue to do the programs for mental health, you know, disabled adults, vets, all for free. I mean, we don't charge for any of our services, all the workshops, all the curriculum, all the food we give out, that's all free, and that's because of the events. And lastly, the events bring in new people. Every time I have an event, half of the guests are just wanting tours of the farm, and then later in that week, we've got all new kinds of volunteers. So, you know, my passion is, is exposing people to open green space, and the fact that I can just bring in all these strangers that can come in and come along with our mission is just really rewarding for us at Renewable Farms. So that's kind of why we do the events.
Thank you. And then, and just on that note, I, I know, when I first met Erin, this was way before the pandemic. I visited that farm, and actually, my daughter was looking at your venue to have her wedding, but she had a few too many guests, so we had to move in. But the, one of the things that struck me was the partnerships you've created with the, with the schools, the veterans, and so forth. And I think here, it could be a similar partnership, because our, our schools, a few years ago, I was trying to begin a community garden to help the Richmond area, because we have had a high rate of obesity there with, with our students and, and the families. So we were trying to figure out how to teach them how to farm and grow produce. So it, it's hard to do that. I mean, we tried, I made an effort, and we, we got it off the ground, and then the, the people that were going to run it left. So that, that was hard. And then, I also like that the, the food's going to be given away, and again, in that community, if we can provide them with some fresh produce, I think it helps the quality of life. And I also like the fact that you're working with veterans to try and bring them back and, and deal with some of the issues they have when they come back from, in this case, from the Middle East. And I think that the six-month extension would just allow us to vet some of those programs out. Even after six months, we don't have an obligation to say yes just because we did it. So I want to see that vetted out and to see how we can deal with parking. And, and again, I, I really like the partnership that we would have with the schools, the restaurants, the community, the city, and then the veterans. I think that could be a great win. And, and again, COVID didn't allow us to come, to bring this back now. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, I, I move the, I would move to give them another six months and see if we could come up with a plan that works for everyone and address that parking issue.
A few questions. So I had a few questions, because, you know, one of the things I, I just wanted to clarify, I mean, it's been about a year and a half, and there's virtually nothing to show for it. So when you were given the initial E and A, did you understand that there were time constraints and duty to perform certain commitments in accordance with that?
Yeah, absolutely. We immediately started working with 30th Street Architects to develop the site, to have a, a plan that we can go out to donors and start fundraising, just so we can show them our ideas for the park. And, I mean, that took about six months, I mean, to really, lots of meetings back and forth, making sure that, you know, what we're designing is on par with what you guys see for the future of that site. And then, yeah, I mean, I don't mean to make it as an excuse, but, I mean, we, we were hit pretty hard with the pandemic, and, I mean, even as the director, I haven't, you know, I've taken myself off salary. I mean, we, I was at the farms, working myself every day, just providing food. So unfortunately, this, this kind of had to sit on the back burner for us. It doesn't mean I stopped thinking about it, you know, I was still pursuing, you know, 24 Carrots and the architects and stuff like that, but that, that's really all I got.
Did you ever go to the city and explain or express any concerns about, you know, lack of fundraising or inability to get things done along the way?
Yeah, Matt's been super helpful this entire time. We've been in touch probably every month, you know, talking. He set me up with St. Jude, who gave me a grant for a grant writer. So I currently have a grant writer right now that's looking for funding for this specific project, but as you guys know, that takes months, too. So we've been with them for a little bit now and hoping to get more funding. I've been working with John Phelps. He's a huge advocate of this project and calls me all the time, checking in. He's a huge advocate of this project and calls me all the time checking in. He has, I've applied for a couple of grants with him. He's invited me to a lot of the meetings where I can speak to other people on behalf of this. But it, it, it has just been a really hard time to go around asking, asking foundations for money for things that weren't COVID-specific. So that's where we found a challenge.
So how many funds, what's, what's the dollar amount of funds you've raised to date?
I've gotten $30,000 as of today.
And that's including the St. Jude funding?
That's the St. Jude for a grant writer.
Okay.
And then that's one other grant, yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I had a few questions for-
Were you finished, Mayor Perdón?
Yeah, you know what, go ahead.
Thank you. I had a few questions for the 24 karats. This letter that we've received today is a letter of intent, an understanding, not legally binding agreement. No monetary commitment is noted on the letter. What do you assume or presume your monetary commitment would be?
To put an exact dollar on amount on it right now, I couldn't give you an exact dollar amount, but we have ourselves, as I mentioned earlier, we, we either own, operate or have agreements with eight other venues throughout Orange County. We have renovated those spaces ourselves, financially supporting each of those renovations.
Give me a ballpark figure of what that would be, since you've done eight.
I would say, again, I've reached out to some contractors. I'm still getting some bids back, but let's say a million dollars.
A million dollars.
Yes, I'm, and again, that is just a shot in the dark.
I understand.
I'm just going out there, but we're, we're prepared for that dollar amount.
Understood. So how many events do you think you need to do for, to sustain your business model of 100 or, you know, a million dollars? So to recover that cost? I mean, you're not in business to lose money, right?
Yes. But as I mentioned, I think this is a different project for us in terms of the heart and the direction. This isn't just a for-profit venture for us. This is to partner with a charity that, that aligns with what we want to do, what we want to give back to the community. It being food-based and us being a caterer is a big part of our initiative of wanting to give back. So I would say on average about 100 events a year, which would be about two per week, would be about what a venue needs to sustain itself. And that's not, that could be Fridays, Saturdays, that could be, you know, a corporate event midweek that is doing some team building, you know, in the farm and then they have a luncheon. It could be all, all kinds of things, but I would see on average about 100 venues or 100 events is needed to sustain it.
Thank you. Mr. Flor, I, I too, like Councilman Silva, visited your facility in Anaheim. It's beautiful.
No, thank you.
How do you propose that you'll be able to sustain? And you're, you're, you're struggling as a nonprofit through COVID admirably. How do you propose you'll sustain not only the Anaheim facility, but now you're opening one in Aliso Viejo and now Fullerton? Is that just going to be too much for you as a small nonprofit?
No, that's a great question. No, I mean, we've, since the Aliso Farm has come up, we've hired more staff. So I'm not answering emails and, you know, spraying bugs off of plants anymore. We've got a lot more people helping out, especially now that events in California have just opened back up. We have revenue coming in, so I can throw myself on salary again. But, um, yeah, that's the plan. Hire, hire what we need to sustain all three farms, which I'm very confident in. Because when it comes to buying supplies, I mean, it's, it's not very different what we're going to be doing here than that we're going to be doing in Anaheim or in Aliso. So I feel very confident that I have the means and the resources and the know-how to sustain another farm. And it's even easier here now because we're not going to be handling the events, which is 90% of the work. Showing up to a farm and, and, and having volunteers and guests come and just working together, that's life-giving, that's fun, that's easy. We could do it in our sleep. It's the events that we're good at, but they're phenomenal at. And they have all the resources, all the staffing, everything that they need to sustain that, which will help us focus more of our energy on keeping the farm beautiful and opening up to the community.
Well, it is, it is certainly beautiful, the, the product you have in Anaheim.
Oh, thanks.
I had one other question for you.
Yes.
The Anaheim facility, when I visited it, it's gated.
Yes.
This is supposed to be a public park. How do you propose to bridge it divide?
So I was, I mean, it's gated because there's a lot of thievery. There's, you know, a lot goes on in Anaheim, in the area we're in. And, and, I mean, I, I love that area. I think I'd rather be there than in an area where there's not stuff like that going on. I mean, that's why we're there, to, to make the area hopefully a, a better place. You know, I've heard stories that this isn't, wasn't the best, you know, historically has the best track record. I think a fence is necessary. There's going to be a lot of valuable stuff there. There's going to be people in there that want to feel safe. There's going to be kids in there after school that are working. I think, I think putting a gate around it is a great idea. But there's also going to be staff there all the time. We're going to be there all in the week, we're going to be all on the weekends. There's not going to be the ability for trouble to, to sneak in. And those gates are going to be open for people. I mean, there'll be gates, but they'll be open and people can come in. So what we do in Anaheim is we have operational hours that, that people know that they can just come at any time and work with us. And that's the same plan that we're hoping for in Fullerton. And that's what's happening in Aliso too. There's public time and then there's private time. And that, in that private time, like Lynn was saying, that, you know, 100 events per year, that could be closed to the general public, but open for those private events that fund our nonprofit.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I appreciate a lot of the concerns that were mentioned, you know, like parking and, and noise, et cetera. And I think those were, will be things that would be addressed as Director Folks said during this, this negotiation period. But unless we give this option of negotiation, unless we, we see it through, we really won't be able to address some of these, these issues. One of the most important things for me is to make sure that the community is involved in all of this and it, and, and the outcome and the product ends up being a benefit to the community as whole. And that really requires an involvement by the community, which I'm, I'm so happy to see many residents of that particular street, that neighborhood, come out and speak their opinions. You know, South Fulton and, and specifically, I think Trusslow, has not been one of the most looked-after neighborhoods. And I think this is something that would revitalize, in my opinion, the neighborhood. It would provide something that is unique and hopefully will transform that, the neighborhood. Again, we, we won't know all of this unless we go through the process. We had that little thing called COVID that came and disrupted a lot of our, a lot of the work that we've been doing. And I think this deserves another chance and at least for the community to be engaged and to provide their input on what they would like to see as far as specifics, as far as events, as far as some of the programming and what their needs are in that. So I hope to, that we can give, this council can give this a chance to at least see that through. Thank you.
I would like to give a little bit of time in looking at the process at this point. As a member of the council, it's important to me to have choices. I, I understand it's very commendable, what's being proposed for that area. And it's something that I, I would probably favor very much because I'm a, a big fan of gardening and green spaces, things like that. But I think we have a specific plan, it was mentioned by a speaker, a specific plan that really hasn't been addressed by this council at this point. This property, this area, is really a centerpiece of what is to follow in that area. So while I find what's being proposed here is commendable, I'm not sure it's really the right location for something such as being opposed or proposed. The, it is a blank canvas at this point. And as a council member, I like to be able to have selections to choose. This is almost like going into a restaurant, being seated and being handed a menu and there's one item on the menu. It's like going to a multiplex theater, 20 screens. And you walk in, the same movie is playing on all the screens. Or this is an Olympic year, we're going to have the Olympics in Japan. So you get ready for the big event, a sport that you love, and there's one competitor there. I, I'm not a fan, I haven't been a fan in the past of extending ENAs. And while I can certainly commiserate with the difficulties through COVID-19 in terms of, of trying to move this forward, I think that it would be very wise of this council to allow this E and A to expire and to explore and look at some other options or at least invite other options to take a look at this. And that needs to be done in context with whatever the plans are for the specific plan for, for these areas. And, and in that case, you know, and I've, I've cited this in the past to staff, is don't give us one option. We're not interested in a single option. We talk with many members of the community, we have our constituents, we're trying to appease all of Fullerton in this process. And while I appreciate the hard work and the talent that staff applies to each issue, to provide us a single choice, something that's already pre-digested and pretty much here it is, that's that one item on your plate, that's really not what I'd be interested in here. I would love to see what other possibilities could exist in this location. And I'm concerned about the adjacencies here as well. This area could be an extension south of Soco area and it could create balance. It could create balance to what we have to the north. But I think that balance needs to be sustained by a certain amount of vibrancy. At the very least, a park in the highly dense, densified area would, would still be a, a fallback, something where children and where families could, could utilize that. So I, I'd like to see a few more options than just the one option. So I would be in favor of, of allowing the E and A to expire.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I just have a quick question. When, when you cite options, I mean, this is designated as a park. I'm, I'm not, I'm unclear on what options. Are you looking at other nonprofits that may have a similar model or, or just an option to go back to a park? I'm not clear on what options.
Well, we're actually contracting out to a business where even if it's a nonprofit, there's a profit direction on this. It has to be sustaining, it has to fund everyone who's working there. The idea, even a pre-selecting a nonprofit above any other alternatives other than the park portion, something, what I'm saying is you need to look at this area in conjunction with what else is to, to accompany it. And we haven't done that in this case. And we've had a delay, we've had the, the lockdown, the pandemic. We can look at it afresh now as the economy is rising and see what other potentials could exist in this location.
But forgive me, if I may, the understanding, the process of putting out something for an RFP, wouldn't an RFP be something a city would put out what they are looking for? So as opposed to, hey, here's, we've got a, an empty land, who wants to come and do what? Because usually RFPs are, we would like to see something, here are our guidelines for what we'd like to see. And then developers or organizations or whatever bid on an item. But in, in this case, I'm, I'm trying to understand-
There is development potential in a larger area, in a larger radius than just the park. That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
It sounded like for a second you started to make a substitute motion and I would be willing to support that. You know-
Consider it a substitute motion to allow the E and A to-
I don't believe you had a second to your first motion.
Second Councilmember Silva's motion.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So I'll finish my comments and we can get to the rest of the procedure. But you know, I, I think it's important to note here that, you know, and I certainly don't want to malign anyone, but I want to put this in the context of those of us that also work in the, you know, private sector and are also in the business of raising funds and competing to acquire property. I can tell you that I've been in, I've been fortunate to be, you know, pretty much in the office, you know, virtually every day since, you know, the pandemic started, working to raise funds and working to also acquire properties and have been very fortunate to do that. And so I think for us to grant, you know, this, you know, the applicant here tonight, an extension would be doing the community a disservice. And I, I say this because this is a group in the community that's waited about 20 years for something to happen with this particular site. And so if by saying, we are going to give another six months so that we can go out and get the best of multiple solutions, you know, and find something that's actually, you know, that, to get actually people competing for the site as opposed, as opposed to exclusively awarding someone, you know, the right to a site, you know, then you actually get people who step up to the table. As someone who, who is, you know, negotiates contracts for a living, I can tell you, you want to look for the, you know, as a seller, you want to look for the strongest buyer. And that's someone, you know, with the, with a track record and a history of performance and essentially someone who has the, you know, has the equity and actually has the funds to contribute. And as we've seen over the past almost 18 months now, we just haven't seen this, seen this with this particular applicant. So, you know, again, I, I would rather see us kind of retool internally and put out an RFP so that we could have actual multiple vendors apply and figure out something that's really, I think, going to work for the community, perhaps in accordance with the specific plan that's been, you know, drafted and kind of circulated. So that's where I'm at.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Robert Young. I brought this before our council. The city has long awarded long-term ENAs without much public input. My heart goes out to all of you that live within an earshot of this park. The fact that you live next to a park that's been gated for so long is a travesty I can't hardly imagine to see that in this day and age. It's not even blighted, they just closed it because they didn't know what to do with it. So my heart goes out to all of you. And believe you me, we, we are attempting to fix that and resolve that for you and that community. That said, when it comes to the, this is yet another example of the city's staff proposing to know what's best for its people. And I just shake my head in, in absolute confusion that our city's relationship with its residents hasn't changed much in years. And we have a councilman that commented on that because we just don't provide things that people in Fullerton would like. And not in the timely, excuse me. And certainly not in the timeliness that they are requesting it in. So a renewable farm is in all its forms, is so admirable, but it's not a public park. It's effectively, as far as I can see based on the business model, it could potentially leave Fullerton holding the bag. I mean, it's effectively a government subsidy. So I, I commend your work and I, I encourage the community, please give us time, we will find a solution for this. I just don't believe this is it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Yeah, no, just a couple of things. The Renewal Farms does have a track record, you know, they performed before COVID, they were running the Anaheim, Overbrook, it was running itself, they were creating profit, they were creating services. And, and the park was closed there because the residents there didn't want a park open because of all the, the stuff that was going on there. So, so they, they came to the city and asked us to close it. And that's why it's been closed. And then when the, the redevelopment agency went out, they took it over and, and so forth. So it, it wasn't that the city didn't listen to them, it listened to the residents there and said, hey, we don't want this park here because we've got undesirables coming, we got drug addicts coming by shooting up. In fact, when I first ran in '16, I was knocking on doors and I was like, hey, if you want, we can open this park up and have you guys have a little neighborhood park. And they were like, no, we don't want that. We had it closed because of all this going on. So, and at the time we went out with this, there was no other options for the park. We hadn't had any type of interest in it, no one was soliciting us or anything. And, and they came in and said, hey, how about this? And we said, all right, let's try it. So it, it wasn't that the, the staff gave us only one option. The, the past council went out and told staff, we want to see this, give them a chance to, to work this out. So I, I don't, in this case, you know, I mean, any of the cases, I don't see us blaming the staff or them bringing this to us. We, well, the previous council asked for it and we, and we negotiated it and we put that in place, giving them some time to look at this. Again, doesn't mean we're going to go and, and do the project. It just means let them, give them some time, let them hash it out and bring it back. And then at that time, if we like it, fine, if we don't, we go out and, and we do something else. So I mean, just in all fairness, because of the COVID where they didn't have the, the time and the resources and the ability to go out and put this together, I, I would say just to, to honor our part, you know, give them an extension. If six months is too long, then I would, you know, amend it to three months. But I, I think I want to see what they have to offer. I want to see them do the outreach. We have residents here who want to see this in their area. So we, and we've got, again, we can create these great partnerships. So, you know, I'm hoping that we could, again, extend it and then come back and then we can always say no again.
Mr. Silva, what my, what I- Mr. Silva, what my, what I would envision is they wouldn't be shut out of the process. They could certainly proceed with the competing, uh, option on this. But to open it up to other ideas or other alternatives, to allow the city council to have a say in, in whatever, uh, policy is developed here, is what I'd be looking for.
No, and I understand that, but again, we, we've been working with them, we're trying to work with them. And again, if, now for COVID, we would have had an item come before us earlier and then we would have decided and, you know, we could have done the same thing, said, "Well, no, we, we disagree." So just in, in that realm of have, have been in a partnership, it's coming to an end and they didn't get what they were supposed to, through no fault of theirs. Uh, I, I just think we, we would, it would be prudent for us or in good, uh, faith with us to say, "Hey, here's another three, six months, show us what you have."
Mayor, may I just, uh.
Sure.
Make a couple of points here as far as outreach into the community. I have met with the residents of Trusslow, uh, prior to this, when this was just an idea. Um, we met, in fact, several times, um, throughout this, uh, process. So, uh, the community was, uh, the, the specific impacted residents, uh, in this, in, on Trusslow have been informed, have been part of this and, and watching this as it has progressed since, uh, its, uh, its idea. So to say that, uh, we want to do something, uh, for them, um, yet, uh, have them wait for something that I'm not sure, still, I'm very unclear what options, because the only options I've heard that were floated around were, uh, parking structure to benefit, um, a, a private, uh, structure next to it, or, or maybe other, you know, types of development. Now, I do want to also remind folk, uh, folks that this is designated as a park. So in order to, to put it out to a bid for any other use, it requires, I believe, us to, uh, I mean, to rezone this somehow. And, and I, I think there, there are some legal challenges in that, in that to begin with. So, uh, I, I think that if this council does not wish to renew this agreement, that, uh, that we keep this as an open space. But, but, um, I, I, what I'm hearing from the residents is that they would like this to, at least see it through, uh, as it, it was promised to them early on in the stages. So, um, I hope this council does listen to the residents of Trusslow, uh, a, a neighborhood that has been ignored so long in this city. And now we have the residents out here saying this is what they want. And yet we are still ignoring them for other reasons I still don't understand.
All right. So, uh, 100 events a year and it's enormous amount of impact. And it is the job of our council and elected representatives to see what that impact could be. For residents in that community, yours, that space is so valuable to you and you want something out of that, of course, you want movement. But what if that movement now creates this traffic situation none of you were aware of? It is our job to see that through. That's why we're elected. And as such, uh, I, again, I, I admire your work. I have to tell you, I, I've seen the farm. It's beautiful. But it's gated, it's not a public park, and these events, 100, to, to meet the business model that they have, that's the minimum of what they'll need to meet that business model. To me, that's a, an impact on that, that residential community that's already been burdened by so much. So thank you very much.
Thanks. I, I don't want to foreclose any other council comments, but, uh, Madam Clerk, I just wanted to, we had an earlier motion, then we had what we thought was a substitute motion, but then we had a retroactive second to that earlier motion, right?
Right now, all I have is a motion to approve by Silva, seconded by Zara.
Oh, then let me make it clear. I do want to make a motion to allow the ENA to expire. So now, is there any further commentary by council?
Well, Mr. Mayor, actually, if I can confirm, uh, the ENA is expiring. This would be to.
To not extend it.
To create it, yeah. It would be to extend or to issue a new ENA for six months, so.
Well, but, but the motion on the floor is, is council direction, so it, it will have the effect of lock.
Okay.
Allowing this ENA to expire.
Correct.
That's the motion.
Yeah. And, and not renewing it, so.
Right.
Actually, Counselor, I'd like to ask a question. It was suggested that perhaps we might not be able to submit some sort of an RFP, uh, to the public to solicit, you know, additional uses for this site. Is that, is there any truth to that?
We have, well, you're not, you're not legally precluded. The question will be the underlying zoning and land use. The RFP is going to have to reflect that underlying z, uh, land use and council's direction to be compatible to how the city and staff sees that, that legal limitation.
Sure. Thank you.
And so, so in my original motion, would, would it, um.
Uh, the substitute motion would come first.
Right. And I was just going to say, if, if, if that was the case, would, would council, uh, be willing to do a three-month extension just to see what they can come up with? And that way we can address, look at the parking impact, the, the noise impact before we say, uh, no. Uh, and I, uh, Mr. Jung, would you be, uh, agreeable to that, to do a three-month extension just to, so we can see the impact, so we can hear from the residents and we can see what kind of parking requirements we'll need?
Uh, I'd much rather prefer what the, uh, the mayor said, um, that if we can get some more ideas. Uh, and again, the renewable farm is not precluded from that, but let's, let's be clear on this. But if we have a better plate of choices, I think that's better, not only for our council, but for our residents as well. Thank you.
Point of clarification, if you will, Mr. Mayor. Um, when, when we say, when, when, you know, come back with options and so on, what timeline are we looking at here?
We'll find out. We'll determine that.
When?
We can agendize it right away if you wish.
Are you willing to add that in, in, as part of your motion, too?
Yes, as long as, uh, staff follows the direction, if the majority go, the majority vote goes this way, boy, this mask is a problem. And brings us back more than one option, that, that indeed is what my concern is, is that we're not just plated up a single option. And it can certainly include this option. So in, in other words, we wouldn't really be preventing anything. They're looking for another six months anyway. They can work toward getting approval along with other potential, uh, suggestions. Now, why is that so hard to understand?
So. Because the suggestions that I've, that have been floated around have been a parking lot, putting out to say.
What are these suggestions that are floating around? What, what is that? None of us have made a suggestion from the day.
I'm sorry, but, you know, I think Mayor Protem mentioned putting out to, uh, to for reference sale, a sale of the land or.
No, I, I suggested, you know, the RFP to allow multiple vendors to compete for the site, because I think that's how the public wins, by having the best of all competitors win. And of course, it, like, as the, you know, city attorney had, had indicated, has to be in accordance with, you know, with the park space, which is the underlying zoning. And so to suggest anything otherwise is foolish. You know, we've got a motion, a sec, or substitute motion in a second. Would you please call the vote, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so could we give direction to the staff to bring back an RFP? Four weeks, six weeks? When would you have something so we can have a specific, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll let this expire, but how soon can you bring something back, Mr. Folks or Mr. City Manager?
I think we could probably have something together by the second meeting in May.
Okay. Can, can we do that? Could that way, we could get moving on it and get it out on the street and see.
Well, that would be fine. I mean, on the one hand, you're looking to delay it six months, but now you're worried about a few weeks.
Well, I, I just want to see how fast, because you had asked, you know, Ms. Councilmember Zara said, "How fast?" And you said, in essence, what I hear was, "How fast can staff get it or what can they do?" So I was just trying to get some clarification. If, if they could bring it back and by the second meeting in May, would that be something that we would, uh.
Obviously, we'll be open, something needs to be done at that site.
Okay.
Um, all that we're doing is saying that we want to entertain some other options. That's all. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
And this is the substitute motion to not extend the ENA. And you also want to include direction to bring something back on May 18th? Okay.
There's no motion to that.
No.
Do you add that to your motion?
No.
Okay, so just not to extend the ENA only.
Right, I mean, we can agendize whatever we wish. We can provide direction to staff.
Okay.
And they can comply, you know, on a timetable that works for staff.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
No.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Okay, motion not to extend passes three to two.
Right. Well, thank you. We look forward to interested parties to provide some options for this council. And with that, uh, we are now at our consent calendar, item number seven, which was pulled by Councilmember Fred Jung.
And then, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just quick, I, I'd like to see if I can get a second to bring back an RFP for the second meeting in May regarding this property.
I will second that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, I just wanted to bring this out, just, uh, I wanted to make a few comments with regards to it before we, uh, we discuss the resolution. Uh, I have been speaking about this for a few months now, and it just frustrates me to, uh, extraordinary degree that, uh, Asian-American attacks continue to happen. A Korean-American couple was physically attacked by a man in orange this month. Same man verbally engaged and assaulted a Japanese-American Olympic athlete earlier. Uh, it had me thinking about, um, something that I had read in, in college, uh, the 442nd, an army unit comprised of Japanese-Americans from Hawaii and the mainland. Uh, "Go for broke" was their motto, sir, or putting it all on their line. And that's exactly what they did in World War II. They laid their lives on the line for a country that took away their homes, their livelihood and their freedom in the name of national security. While their mothers and fathers, sisters and brothers were being interned and imprisoned, the 442nd went on to become the most decorated unit in the entire history of the U.S. military. The men of the 442nd earned nearly 9,500 Purple Hearts, 21 Medals of Honor, and an unprecedented seven, uh, presidential unit citations. They believed in America even when America didn't believe in them. So I urge all of us this evening, again, to remember that these senseless attacks on our fellow Americans is a reminder that we continue to be separated in interest and divided in purpose, and it is the reason why America cannot unify. So if we can show some unity and, uh, support our fellow Americans, uh, I'd be grateful, sir. And with that, I'm, I'm happy to move the resolution along, sir.
A second.
It's certainly, Councilmember Jung, is easy to agree with this resolution, which says that we denounce discrimination and condemn hate, violence, racism, xenophobia, and intolerance. I, I don't think there's much debatable about that.
Agreed, sir. Thank you.
With that, if there's no further commentary, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Some unity. I like that. And that concludes our regular session of the Fullerton City Council. Uh, our next meeting will be, goodness. May 4th. And, uh, so until then, we are adjourned now again to closed session. We are back from closed session and, uh, city attorney has a statement.
We're now going to do a downstairs reporting on closed session this evening. However, the city council has to let you come back for a special council meeting on Tuesday. I forgot the date, it's going to be 4:00 P.M.
We from today?
We from the day.
Okay.
And with that, the council comments, we are adjourned.